And the time is seven o'clock?
We'd like to welcome everybody to the MOFD board meeting on May 21st. Thank you all for coming. I know we have a lot to cover tonight, so we'll start with a roll call and call the meeting to order.
Director Dan Ziger.
Here.
Director Dex.
Here.
Director Jorgens.
Here.
Director Romer does plan to attend, so I'm assuming he's running late. And President Hassler.
Here. Would you all please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so the next item would be item two.
Okay, item two, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Item two is our public hearing. And were we planning to arrange the order?
Yes. Yes, we are going to rearrange the order because we have many people here that I think item number six on the agenda is the one that most people want to see. So we're going to move the agenda around and start with item 6.1, which is the presentation, sorry.
From the community warning system?
Yes. Do we have our presenters here?
We do.
Good evening, directors. The item 6.1 is a presentation by the Community Warning System staff. This was asked by the directors a couple of months ago, and we couldn't get it worked out where the CW available to come last month. So we asked for them to be here this month, and the presentation's on behalf of their request of the board. Marcia, I believe they're online. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Being able to me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. All right. My name is Julie Beach. I'm the Community Warning System Manager for Contra Costa County. We are a unit within the office of the Sheriff Emergency Services Division. And let's go ahead and get started. So next slide, please, Marcia. Thank you. So the Community Warning System, or CWS, is Contra Costa County's comprehensive emergency alert system. What we do is we provide rapid notification to residents and visitors when immediate protective action is necessary due to an imminent hazard that threatens health or human life. So the Community Warning System supports swift coordinated responses by integrating multiple communication tools to maximize our ability to reach the public. We're a resource that's available to train the incident commanders, so that includes law enforcement, fire services, as well as the county health officers. And these officials can request activation of the Community Warning System during emergencies that pose an imminent threat to health or human life anytime 24/7/365. Once the Community Warning System has been requested and activated, what we do is the system ensures that the residents are informed in the area that's being affected promptly and with the most clear information that we can possibly provide by communicating with the incident commander directly and ensuring that we have all of the necessary details to send out. So the Community Warning System does not notify the public independently, so we do not send out our own emergency alerts. We do it on behalf of trained incident commanders. And that's how it needs to be accessed is by an approved incident commander. Next slide, please. So the Community Warning System is designed to notify people within the area impacted by a hazardous event. So it's activated only in emergencies where there is an urgent need and protective action is recommended to preserve life and health safety. So this slide shows what we end up sending, types of hazards, examples, so fire incidents and the protective actions that are associated with them. So evacuation warnings, which is a prepare to evacuate. Evacuation orders, which is you need to evacuate now. In conjunction with that, we will put out that you also, if you're not in that immediate area, that you do need to avoid the area. We also put out notifications on behalf of industrial facilities and hazmat incidents. Those are mainly auto triggered, and then we follow up with hazmat directly to send out additional notifications. And what those look like is shelter in place in conjunction with avoid the areas, as well as evacuation warnings and orders possibly. We also do send out a tent to locate for at-risk persons. These are different than Amber Alerts, although we do have that same Amber Alert wireless emergency alert tool. We do not use it in this county for our at-risk missing persons. Only the CHP does that in the state of California. We also send out lockdown, shelter in place, and avoid the areas for any law enforcement activities such as active shooters. And then also we can utilize for severe weather related incidents such as flooding. So we'll send out evacuation warnings, orders, in conjunction with avoid the area, as well as possibility of things like children. Next slide, please. So this is here to just kind of show what this looks like for us. So for something like a hazardous material or gas leak, what a protective action would be. So the risk type, if it's flammable and explosive, we may send out an evacuation on behalf of an incident commander who's asking people to get out of the area. If there's a health concern, so something non-flammable like a hazmat, such as something that we have like a hazmat industrial release that goes off site, we may send out a shelter in place on behalf of public health. Next slide, please. Again, this is another example of the risk type with a protective action. So for a fire, again, evacuation warning versus an evacuation order. Evacuation warning being specifically that you need to be prepared to evacuate. And then with the evacuation order being that you need to evacuate immediately for your own. Next slide. So the Community Warning System integrates a range of mass notification tools that we're able to send out at the push of a button. So we incorporate a range of these tools to ensure that the messages that we're sending out reach the widest possible audience in that intended area. So what we utilize within the system includes our phone calls, text messages, emails. We also automatically post at the same time as we send out the alert to our social media platforms, which is X and Facebook. We also send out the alerts via wireless emergency alerts and the emergency alert system for some of our alerts, which are federal tools that we utilize, and we're the only ones in the county that do that. And really what we're after here with so many different notification pathways is a really layered approach that will increase the likelihood that we're able to reach people and provide them the information they need so that they can take emergency action, even if one method fails. So if you don't receive a phone call to a landline, at least we know that we can reach you via your cell phone or an email or a text message. So we really try to enhance redundancy as much as possible to make sure that we're able to reach the targeted area of the event and the people that are impacted. Next slide, please. So this is the Community Warning System registration. So basically what we ask people to do is that we have varying ability to we ask people to register for the Community Warning System because the best data that can be provided is from you directly. So if you go to cwsalerts.com and click on registration, we ask that you provide your email, set up a profile for yourself, provide at least one phone number to call you, at least one text message to call you, your locations so that we're able to effectively geo-target you. And then a couple other pieces of information that help us evaluate the system. Once you go into your Community Warning System profile, you have the ability to provide a total of three phone numbers for phone calls, three phone numbers for text messages, three different locations. So if you have business that you work at, and then you also live in the county or a loved one, you can provide multiple different locations. So that way, if anything occurs in that area, we can, we have the ability to notify you. There's no limit on how many profiles that you can create. So when you see advertisements or you see us out in the public and we're asking you to register for the Community Warning System, this is the process that we're asking you to go through, is to provide us as many opportunities as possible to reach you in an emergency. Next slide, please. So these are the other ways that we can reach you. We talked a little bit about how our system is connected to social media. Part of that is also the Community Warning System website. So this is just a photo of what it looks like on when we post for in this incident, that Public Health Advisory for Pittsburgh and Antioch. A map will show up on our Facebook automatically. It also shows up with a more detailed message on our cwsalerts.com website. And then it also a link currently posted to Twitter that you can follow that will bring you to the Community Warning System website so that you can get more information. There is also an interactive map that appears on our website so you can zoom in and zoom out and see if you are in the affected area that the alert is being sent out to. Next slide, please. So this is a photo of what one of our 43 sirens that's along the industrial corridor of the county looks like. Marcia, I believe, and I'm not sure if this is on the PowerPoint or if you have this on the slide, but if so, can you play the?
Yes, I can.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Let's see. Maybe I cannot.
Okay, well, what I can go ahead and do is I'll send you guys a link to follow up. And you can actually hear the sound on our website. Basically what this does is it plays you the sound of the siren so you know you can familiarize yourself with what a siren sounds like. So part of our comprehensive toolkit that the Community Warning System utilizes does include the 43 sirens, which are again located along the industrial corridors of the county, which houses four major oil refineries along with other industrial and chemical facilities. So the sirens are designed to warn the public of large hazardous material events, really just those related to industrial incidents such as refinery accidents. When we do activate them, they serve as a call to action for immediate protective steps, which is to shelter in place. The sirens that we have in the system are integrated, which means that we have created basically terminals within the industrial facility so that if there is an incident that goes off site, someone at the facility is able to push a button instantly. And what that does is it sends out an emergency alert to the public immediately surrounding the facility to shelter in place. And the messages are delivered across the board so that basically through all of our modalities. That includes we are EAS text message, phone calls, along with the sirens. So those all go up automatically through them triggering, and then the Community Warning System duty officer follows up with the incident commander to continue to send out notifications based on assessment from the incident commander and and their point of view. So we will continue to update information. So the sirens automatically sound at the same time as the emergency alert is sent out. This is in a multi-step process. And what we also do as the Community Warning System duty officers is we resound the sirens throughout the entire event as needed on a 30-minute basis to ensure continued public awareness and safety. So the sirens are coupled with all of the So the sirens are coupled with all of the other community warning system tools and they're not a standalone way of notifying the public in an event. Instead, what they are is they're really part of our comprehensive network of notification tools. So the biggest thing to do when you're in an area and you hear a siren sound within Contra Costa County is you need to shelter in place with your family and your pets. You should go indoors and stay inside. Shut all doors, windows, turn off fans, air conditioners, your ventilation systems. And then you need to listen for official updates via your local media, phone notifications, and weather radios to make sure that you understand the nature of the emergency as well as further instructions.
Sorry for the interruption, but the audience is having a little bit of difficulty, um, understanding and hearing you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Can you hear me okay here?
There, there's an echo or a mushy sound to it. It's not clear and distinct.
Okay. Did that just start?
Yeah, it was kind of a little bit, um, so I'm wondering. Yeah, it might be your microphone.
Okay, hold on. I apologize. Thank you guys so much for letting me know. Um. How about now?
That is much better. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your patience. Where would you like me to go back to so I can?
Just keep going.
Okay.
It's good for you to keep going. The audience, the, your presentation is included in our packet. And so they're, you're able to refer to everything you're talking about to.
Wonderful. And if any of you guys missed anything, the community warning system is happy to take phone calls later on and answer questions that you have. So I apologize, but thank you guys for your patience on that. Okay. So next slide. The, this is just a photo of where our sirens are located throughout the, um, throughout Contra Costa County along the industrial corridor. Um, we do work closely with CARE to put out, notify, or to put out an advertisement with them and hazmat. Um, that sirens and the associated, the associated sound means that you need to shelter shut and listen. So some of you guys who may live or work in the area, um, along the industrial corridor may soon be getting advertisements which help provide, uh, further instruction on, on what the sirens mean. Next slide, please. So other tools that we have wireless emergency alerts or WEA's, the community warning system uses wireless emergency alerts and we're the exclusive voice of Contra Costa Emergency Alert. So this is one of the tools that we exclusively have. Um, and it is one of our key tools that we utilize in case of emergencies. So what are WEA's? They are short emergency messages that can be sent by government authorities like the community warning system through cell towers to mobile devices in targeted geographic areas. And how they work is when we activate them through our system, a message will appear on your mobile phone, much like a text message, but with a really distinct alert tone and vibration to get your attention. So that amber alert tone is what I'm talking about when I'm talking about a wireless emergency alert. Um, the alerts are location-based, meaning that you do not need to sign up with the community warning system to receive those. They do however, need to be enabled on your smartphone device and not blocked. Um, essentially, if you have a WEA capable receiving cellular device, you will, and if you're in the affected area, your phone will get the alert or should get the alert. Um, these messages are really brief, but they're critical, delivering lifesaving information when immediate action is needed. What we do in Contra Costa County is we include the link to CWS Alerts within that WEA so that you can then click that link and get a more extensive overview of what's going on in the area and what protective action you need to take. Um, and the reason why they matter is that in the event of a hazardous material release or fire or other public safety type of threat, WEA messages really help us ensure that anyone in that area that has a capable device, including those who have not registered for the community warning system, receive timely warnings and can take immediate protective actions like sheltering a place or evacuating. Um, another tool that we utilize as part of, um, our IPaaS agreement federally is the emergency alert system. And that is federally regulated communication tool that allows us to basically hijack broadcasts. So many of you guys have seen, um, old school emergency alert test system messages. And that's what this really is, is we send this out and participating broadcast will go ahead and publish the alert. We're very selective when we send that out because we can't limit that to Contra Costa County that will go out regionally. So we save that for when we, like, things like, um, our hazardous material level three alerts, when we're doing very large scale alerts, large scale evacuations is when we'll go ahead and we'll utilize that tool um, to notify the public as another adjunct way to, in a major emergency. Um, so the emergency alert system is again federally regulated, um, and only available to certain alerting authorities. If the CWS utilizes an emergency alert or the emergency alert system, it again will be widely disseminated and it'll override regular programming on radio and TV stations and deliver, it's just another pathway to deliver that critical time sensitive instructions to the public. Um, and it's especially important for reaching individuals who may not be on social media or who have registered for text or email alerts or who may not really engage, um, online. So the emergency alert system is just another reliable way to make sure that we're reaching as many people as possible. So a really broad audience, super quick, um, particularly in situations involving, again, evacuations, hazardous material releases, or shelter in place orders. Um, and it's just another way that we can ensure that the information that we put out during an emergency is accessible across traditional media, even during things like power outages, when battery powered radios may be really kind of the only source of news. Um, another thing we utilize are NOAA weather radios. So the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration does choose to broadcast emergency information 24/7, including things like non-weather related alerts. So they will go ahead and publish things like hazardous material releases, evacuations, and shelter in place orders. And how they work, it's really cool, but, um, it, these particular types of radios receive alerts directly from, again, the emergency authorities at, through NOAA, um, and by proxy through the community warning system. So they publish what we're sending them on our behalf. And they, radios will activate automatically if you've got it programmed when the alert is issued, even if your radio is in standby mode. Um, many of these models are very cool because they're battery powered. So it makes them a really reliable backup fail-safe during a power outage. Um, and they're independent and consistent source of information. So it's just another kind of redundancy built in that, um, we recommend strongly that people have within their emergency preparation toolkit, um, just so they have an opportunity to receive vital information, no matter what the circumstances are. Next slide, please. So this tool is kind of where, what I'm trying to do is make sure that we're explaining all of the different ways that we can reach the public. So the community warning system is able to reach the public without CWS registration. That's gets a little bit of compute. This is probably one of the more, uh, frequent questions that the community morning, warning system relieves. So if you do not register, you choose to not register. Ways that you can be reached during an emergency include, uh, police and fire going door to door, providing you notification. The community warning system will utilize, if we've been activated by an incident commander, wireless emergency alert. So if you have a WEA capable device, you'll receive an alert that way. We import data through reverse 911 from several sources. So we do do utilize reverse 911 to provide phone calls to, um, like to those specific data sets for Contra Costa County. Um, we'll utilize the emergency alert system. So if you're watching TV or listening to a radio, you may get the alert. Um, NOAA weather radios, if you have one, that's another way we can provide the alert to you. If it's a hazardous material related event and you are near a siren, we'll sound the sirens so that you know that you need to shelter in place. We automatically post to Twitter and Facebook, um, CWSAlerts.com website. Um, and then also what we do is we send out our alerts to all of the PSAPs, so the public safety access points, all of the dispatch centers throughout the entire county, um, through basically connected, um, servers within our system. And that allows them to share it on things like their, uh, their NEXOL or their RAVE system so they can repeat that information. So if you're subscribed to your local area's advisory alerts, you could also receive the information that way. Uh, the community warning system is also responsible for updating the Genesis Protect app. So we do also update that after the emergency alert is sent out. So that's all the ways we can reach the public without somebody registering directly with the community warning system. Next slide, please. So possible ways to reach the public without federal tools. So we have a lot of, there's a lot of federal, not a lot of federal infrastructure, but, uh, wireless emergency alerts as well as NOAA weather radios. And the emergency alert system relies on, um, our agreement and the support of our federal tools, um, with FEMA. And so if that infrastructure is no longer there, or if there is an interruption in that type of in the infrastructure that supports us sending out wireless emergency alerts or being able to activate the emergency broad alert system or send a NOAA, uh, an alert via NOAA weather radio, these are the ways that we can then reach you. So this is reinforcing kind of why we need you to also sign up for the community warning system. So if you have not signed up with us, we can still reach you if we have data from you through the reverse 911, our data imports that we import in monthly. Um, if it's a hazmat facility, we can alert for shelter in place, the sirens. Uh, PD and fire can go door to door for notifications. Uh, we'll still post to our Twitter and Facebook, utilize the CWSAlerts.com website, send out the emergency alert to all of the PSAPs throughout, um, the county. And we'll also be able to update Genesis Protect. So that's how we can reach you if we have no access to our federal tools or we don't have you as a registered user of the community warning system. Next slide, please. So this is why we want you to sign up for the community warning system. Is that this is all of the different ways that now we are able to attempt to reach you during an emergency. So this is why it's so important is that if you have signed up with the community warning system and you've provided us the best information to get ahold of you, we can now reach you via wireless emergency alerts, calls, texts. The emergency alert system, if we use that, we can get ahold, we can try and call up to three of your phone numbers with one profile or multiple different profiles if you've created them. Um, so we have the opportunity to reach you by calls. We can reach you up by, or we can reach you by email, text messages, and then also we can help geo-target you via a different way that's not reliant typically on cellphone, uh, towers. So what this does is it helps us have the best way to possibly reach you, uh, which is one of the reasons why we really press trying to get people to sign up for the community warning system. Next slide. Also, if there is federal infrastructure failure for one reason or another, it provides us additional ways. Again, we can still reach you via the numbers that you have provided us, which means that we're getting the best information from you, um, be a, be, be it your email, your phone call, geo-targeting you via the address you provided, or being able to text you guys the emergency alerts in addition to your door-to-door notifications being performed by the fire department or the police departments, um, and all of the other ways that we could possibly reach you. Next slide, please. Um, so this is a little bit of insight in how this works for your community warning system duty officer. This is how incident commanders get ahold of us. Um, so they, your incident commander on a scene will recognize that there's a need for protective action and that the incident that's occurring is too big for them to go and do door-to-door notification. So they need more communication power and they'll go ahead and they'll get ahold of our dispatch through, uh, CC or Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office. Um, they'll connect us. So the dispatcher will connect us with the duty officer. And then we will speak with the incident commander directly to make sure that we are getting the most up-to-date, accurate information we can possibly get. We already have pre-programmed templates in the system. So we fill in the blanks, put in applicable information, and then we send it to the area specified by the incident commander. Next. Next slide. Beautiful. Um, for our part, for the community warning system is also the administrator for the Zone Haven Genesis platform. So after we send out the emergency alert, we will also then go to the Genesis Protect site. And we will put in a note and change the color and make it public on the app. So that way people who go to the find your zone, uh, or know your zone site have the opportunity to look and see a different way of getting the same information um, that's been provided by the community warning system alert. It's also a common operating picture tool utilized by first responders so that they have the best opportunity to plan, um, how they're going to accomplish things like evacuation together and they're sharing the same picture. So, um, next slide. So are you registered? So we have this QR code. If you're in the room, please go ahead and scan it. If you haven't signed up for the community warning system, it'll take you to our website so that you can provide your information. If you want more information or you missed part of what I said or you have questions, please feel free to reach out to us. I'm happy to provide answers to questions that you may have. Um, and if even you need help or you need materials to help you guys with localized outreach, we are here a hundred percent to help support you guys. Um, and really would love the opportunity to partner so that we can get the word out about the community warning system and continue to make it robust, um, so that we can reach as many people as possible. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any board discussion or questions?
I, I do, I, this is Director Danziger. Uh, Ms. Beach, thank you for that in-depth uh, analysis of, uh, community warning system. I thought I knew a lot about the system, but, uh, I learned a lot tonight.
Wonderful.
And, um, one, one question I'd like to ask you right now is, do you have the statistics for Maraga and Arinda? How many, what percentage of people are signed up?
Yes, I do. And so, um, data is a little bit crazy because we're dealing with a bazillion different, uh, ways of interpreting. But so what I've done is I actually just broke down your guys' number. Um, and the way that I can break it down within my system is by looking at accounts. So, um, for self-registration, so the people who have actually gone to engage with the community warnings or CWSAlerts.com and then logged in and provided their information, for Maraga, I have 6,496 accounts as of 20 minutes before we started this presentation. Uh, for Arinda, 7,129 self-registration accounts. Um, total data, so that means with my, with reverse 911 imports from our, that would include things, um, that are just beyond the self-registration. So the things that we automatically import into our system. Um, there is a total, and this includes with the self-registration account. So the total reach that we have, not including wireless emergency alerts, because we can't quantify that, but just what we have data for is 13,706 for Maraga. And for Arinda, 13,492. I based basically percentages off of your guys' 2020 census, which I got from the Contra Costa County website. So for Maraga, the number I was able to pull from that website was 16,870 was the census reported population for Maraga. which would mean that the, like our total reach roughly would be about 81% for Maraga. Not counting, that's just with people who have actually engaged with the community warning system. That's all that's assessing via, via data import or actually going and signing up the website. For Arinda, the 2020 census report was 19, or for the population was 19,514. And roughly about 69% of the population has engaged with the community warning system, be it, be it via self-registration or data import. So we definitely need to work on our outreach opportunities out in both of those areas.
Well, thank you. Those numbers seem higher than a few years ago when we had numbers. So I know we still have a long way to go. One thing I'd like to ask the fire chief is I know we have a copy here of a letter that we send out to new residents, the dear new resident of our fire district. Maybe we can put something in there about CWS. And I know we have it on our website. I, I've seen the flyer at all the libraries and, you know, every chance I get as a, as a fire-adapted community ambassador, that's one of the, the handouts that I usually give everybody too. So. And so I would, I would also ask you, Ms. Beach, what do you do for outreach? You know, over and beyond the flyers I see in, 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 in the libraries and, and other places. How else do you get people to, to, to sign up?
So we have actually, we just did, launched a big public or PSA campaign, which will go throughout Contra Costa County across, I believe it's 40 different channels on Comcast. So we are putting information out via broadcast in both English and Spanish. We just put out mailers along the whole entire industrial corridors with our partners with CARE and hazmat, as well as industry to, to talk about shelter in place. We go out to CERT and open houses and also homeowners associations and put on presentations. Really, just about anything. We'll go out to farmers markets and talk to people. Recently, we've started going and sitting at coffee with the cop in Lafayette. So that way we're also having the opportunity to engage with the public. We also do a lot of safety fairs. So really, we try our best to attend as many outreach events throughout the county as possible. We're also working with the PTA, which should broaden our reach in schools. But right now we are a really small team. We have a team of three. We do partner often with the Office of Emergency Services for outreach opportunities. But if you guys invite us and we have the ability to attend, we will absolutely attend. If we can't attend in person, then we will do our best to take the opportunity to be able to present to you guys via this method or even just provide you guys with resources. So that way you're able to help us spread the word about why you should engage with the community warning system and sign up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? We'll go ahead and open public comment for this item. Fire Marshal Irving, do we, do I have any public? No. Okay. We do not have any hands raised online as well.
Okay. Then we just proceed?
We can proceed. Would you like to move on to Agenda Item 6.4, which is the budget?
Yes, thank, thank you for it. It was greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Well, now move on to Item 6.4. The operating budget.
Can I just, yeah, one point of order? I may ask counsel, do we need any motion or discussion if we want to move items?
Under the rules, the chair can move items or the board can do it by vote, by motion. But the chair in this case had suggested it so that's permissible.
Yeah, I'm good. I just want to check.
Okay, so next up is adopt the proposed annual operating budget fiscal year 2026 as a preliminary budget. Provide additional direction, board direction.
Good evening, directors. The next item before you is to adopt the annual operating budget. Before Carol gives her presentation, I just wanted to highlight one of the areas that staff has made changes from the last month's presented budget. Hearing a lot of feedback from the citizens as well as having conversations with the town manager, the mayor of Maraga, staff has made changes to the budget to put medic 41, the Arinda or the Maraga ambulance to 24 hours a day instead of the proposed 10 hours a day. Staff looked at the numbers, we pulled some stuff and just took another look at it and felt it was appropriate to have that ambulance staffed 24 hours a day. So I just wanted to call that to the board's attention that that is one of the changes that we are proposing in the budget. Now I'll turn it over to Carol for her presentation.
Good evening, President Hasler. And members of the board, my name is Carol Atwood. I'm standing in for Gloria Sasser tonight as your temporary ambulance services director to go through the preliminary budget with you. Next slide. So, so far we have met in April to talk about a board budget workshop. Received direction from the night we're meeting again on the preliminary budget with incorporation of that direction within the budget as well as taking the advanced ambulance services for Station 41 from a 10-hour day to 24/7 service level for the community. And then we will meet again in June for you to adopt your final budget. And that will be affected on July 1 of 2025. So board direction that we received at the special meeting in April included the following. General Fund discretionary budget, you wanted to basically keep that intact. This, this district gives a lot to their citizens, I have to say. As I told you before, I'm from Santa Clara County and I wish we had chipper services and, and gutter guards and everything else that you do for the public for free. So you wanted to keep that authorized at $500,000 a year, even though it's been trending up, but you're not quite going to spend that. At least it didn't look like that as of a couple of, of weeks ago. But I know that that's a program that's near dear to your heart. So we've kept that in the budget. The staffing, we have budgeted at all authorized positions. And we also have included the negotiated salary increases that were negotiated with all bargaining groups per the three-year MOU that was effective back in July of '24. We did reduce the overtime calculations by about $550,000. But with the addition of the ambulance service going from a 10-hour to 24-hour, we had to increase that by $130,000 this year. The full year of overtime associated with that unit will be $260,000. So when you get to your long-range financial forecast, you're going to see overtime starting to creep up again. But that is what is attributable to its, its higher level of service. And we have a grant that's ending in March 31 of 2026. And it, we would have two fuel mitigation specialists going away at that point. The board directed staff to take those two positions and move them into fire prevention so that we can keep being extremely preventative and, and making sure that that fire risk is maintained. And so those will be moved into the general fund for three months in this next fiscal year. But we also will be closing out that grant and moving about $313,000 for overhead fees that the district gets to keep. So that'll fund those two positions for a while. And will have minimum impact on your general fund, but keep that level of service. Your capital project funds, we increased the Station 41 remodel by another $300,000. And so we have $800,000 in next year's budget, which I know you all will be talking about more in the future. We also increased the Station 45 by an additional $900,000 in next fiscal year, simply because those numbers keep increasing with the additional compliance once you, once you get into construction. Again, the operating transfer out from the tunnel, East Bay Hills fuel break will go into the general fund. We have reduced the interest income calculations by about $50,000 in this next fiscal year. That to me is, is very conservative, but I understand where the board's coming from. I did look at the Philadelphia Federal Reserve projections for the next year and they're actually projecting a much larger return on your portfolio. But again, you can adjust that at mid-year if you feel that that budget is too low at that time. And it will be adjusted in a positive light for your budget. So I'm not worried about it. And then you asked the fire chief to follow up on the Lafayette participation in our CERT-sponsored program. And I'm sure he'll be getting back to you. I believe you gave him a deadline of June 30th. So we've incorporated all those into the budget. Next slide. Obviously, as Chief Isaacs has said, this was our last adjustment that we made to the budget and it is reflected throughout your document as it stands right now. Next slide. So general fund revenue is projected at $40.8 million. And I'd just like to point out that that is mostly property taxes. So about 87% of the revenue that the district receives is from property tax. That was projected at about a 4% increase based on the projections from HDL, who are experts in the field. And it goes up each year by the 2% increase that is authorized under Prop 13. But it also goes up when people sell their homes and that assessed value goes from the oldest assessed value to the newest assessed value. And that's what's really driving this additional increase. Your salary and benefits is also about 87% of your total budget. And that represents $33.5 million. It includes the salary increases that were given at the time of negotiations as well as other benefit increases. Unfortunately, those don't go down. And as you all know, health insurance is going up by an average of 9%. You have very diligently funded your OPEB obligations and your pension obligations. So all of that contributes to that salary and benefit line item. Your operating expenditures are $4.4 million. That includes things like home hardening of $500,000. And it also includes professional services and expenditures to keep the fire stations running and operating. I do want to point out that that is lower than what you actually adopted in fiscal year 24, '25. So I can say the district is really due diligent in looking at its budgets and making sure that where it can cut or where it doesn't see a trend, they're willing to, to not ask for that same level of funding the next year. And that's, that's a nice cultural responsibility to have throughout your district. The transfer to capital projects is $2.9 million next year. That includes a general fund transfer to pay for new equipment and other items. But it also includes a depreciation reserve on some of your equipment and stations. And, and I will say that's different than what you're required to do under governmental accounting standards board guidelines. So you're being extra prudent to make sure that you have those funds when you do have to replace. And that, that is a board prerogative. And then we ended up the, the year with a new projected budget estimate of a whole $34,000. So we're really close. But again, I think you're going to find your interest income is going to go up a little higher than what we've projected. You may have some salary savings, although we are, we, we were fully staffed last time we met. And I think we're almost, we're probably there or almost there again. So there would be some salary and benefit savings as well. Next slide. So the bottom line chart shows your property tax increases. And again, we're talking about general fund revenue. Property taxes are $35.1 million. You did have fee studies done early this, this year on your ambulance and your general service charges. And in total, those fees went up about $200,000. $120,000 is in ambulance fees. Investment earnings, again, we've reduced that slightly. And the strike team overtime revenue is a projection on, on the last 10 years. As I explained before, five years was just too high and we're going to keep our fingers crossed and hope that California has a good fire season year for a change. So if all, all of the rest of the state were as proactive as you guys are, then I think maybe we could, but we'll hope. And next slide. General fund expenditures, $37.9 million. Again, it's, it's driven by your salaries and benefits. You truly are a service-provided organization. And we do reflect the 5% increase this year. We have full staffing. And again, the single role ambulance with medic 41A, which I found out was advanced life versus B, which is basic life. So I'm learning as I go along here. So you have your OPEB contribution and your pension rate stabilization trust. And again, your operating expenditures are bringing about $4.4 million. Next slide. Okay, this is a summary of your, your positions, your, your full-time and part-time positions between the two fiscal years. And as you well know, you've transferred nine vacant firefighter positions out of emergency operations and into the new single-source ambulance program. And I have to say, as a CPA, that, that is a very strategic but very thoughtful move on your part. Because as we talked about, the retirement contributions for safety is quite high. Although I did see the new SISARA report and I will be curious to see if they can meet the reductions in those percentages as we go along. But I hope so. But you are saving some benefit costs there and still providing the community with the service. So this kind of gives a snapshot of, of what you've done. But it does include a safety roster strength of 48 positions plus the three battalion chiefs, the deputy chief and the chief. Excellent. Okay, these are significant differences between the two budget years. Again, we're talking about the retirement contributions, which are, are hefty. And it's hard to control that because it's driven by the, the income that's earned on the retirement portfolio that you don't manage. So if the rates aren't as good as they projected, if they decide to do different actuarial assumptions, like we're living longer, then all those rates go up on you and you have to make up the difference. You're kind of the third leg to that stool. So that has gone up. Your pension rate stabilization fund, you want to make sure that you're funding adequately and you, you are not thinking as aggressively as that retirement system. So you've, you've set aside some money for that. We talked about health and life and workers' compensation keeps going up across the board. But you've also put in more money for public education. And as we saw tonight with the first presenter, that is very important to this district. You want your constituents to be proactive to prevent those fires. Next slide. Okay, capital projects, we have a lot on the plate. And for those in the audience that don't know, because I didn't know, if you order a fire station today, it takes four years to get here. So you have to be very proactive when it, when you're managing your fleet. Station 45 remodel, right now we've budgeted for three point, almost $7 million in the budget. We're in the preliminary phase right now with the architect. That, that station needs to be replaced. Nope, that station needs to be modified. And then a type one engine is the big truck. That's 1.5 million these days. You have EKG monitor replacement because those units are over 10 years old and, and I don't believe they're supported anymore by the vendor. So we want to replace those on all the frontline apparatus. A type three engine is for wildlife fire response. And that's still a huge amount. And then the Station 41 rebuild, that is the initial phase with the architect and permits. And then we have two fire prevention. And then we have two fire prevention vehicles in that group. The general fund is is providing the monies to fund most of those purchases. Next slide. This is showing all of your funds and the reserves. So we have been building up a reserve balance for all funds. The general fund this year, if we stay at the preliminary budget, will add thirty-four thousand dollars, but it's still adding to the good in that pot. But you'll see more going into capital projects because of the increased needs in the next couple of years, and also into the OPEB trust and the pension trust. Okay, so just to double-check with board direction, we are moving forward with the single-role paramedic program from ten to twenty-four hours a day. I see some nodding of heads, so that's a good thing. And then Deputy Chief is going to talk to you about some possible savings that we could get on the apparatus purchases if we sign on the dotted line for that purchase order before June 30th of two thousand twenty-five. And if the board wants to give approval for us to do that, we we don't know what that savings would be, but we wouldn't do it if it was immaterial and and not worth our efforts. And then I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board might have.
I have a question. First of all, Carol. I should start out by saying this was Director Romer. I apologize to everybody for being five minutes late, but I've been here since seven oh five. And I want everybody to know that I've listened very carefully. I'm again impressed by the clarity and the comprehensiveness of your presentation, Carol. I think you're a true professional. You make our job easier. I'm a little bit confused because obviously this board has a responsibility to be responsive to the community. We have heard you, particularly the citizens of Maraga, and we've adjusted those figures. Can you clarify for me, on an annual basis, the total cost of staffing the ambulance at forty-one in Maraga? Is it a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars or two hundred and sixty thousand dollars or some other figure?
It's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the additional overtime that we would need to to have the additional hours. And I was a little confused at first, too, because I wasn't used to the forty-eight hours on, ninety-six hours off. So I literally had to wipe it, I had to draw myself a map. And then you can see that in a week's time, when that first crew starts, after four days off, they come back. Under California law, if they work over forty hours a week, you have to pay them time and a half for the additional that they work in that seven days. So when you plot out that there's there's basically three crews staffing that, and you plot out for the seven days, they may they may switch on how much overtime they get each each week, but we still have to pay the overtime. So it actually does come out to the two six.
Two six, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year, and that's July to July.
That is July to July. That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is Director Haster. Thank you very much. I have a question. It might be for you or Chief Isaacs. But could you walk through, we're upping the staffing in Maraga, but total because of the single role, we're upping service to all both both cities, right? And can you comment on that?
Yes, sir. With the single-role paramedic program, we bring both ambulances that the fire district runs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. First out, where there's no cross-staffing our ambulances. If there's a third call for service, which does happen a couple of times a month, the backup ambulance will be cross-staffed at from Station Forty-two, and that will respond. All three of those ambulances are advanced life support ambulances. We also have in the plan to staff a BLS ambulance in the district. So when calls for service come in and they're not advanced life support or they don't need that paramedic, they can downgrade care from a paramedic to an EMT to keep that advanced life support ambulance back in service.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a follow-up question to Chief Isaacs, if I may. We talked a few hours earlier about this issue, and you made a distinction between the advanced life support units and the basic life support units. And should we decide, should the board authorize the department to add a basic life services unit? We would have to remove from that ambulance certain of the presently equipped, and why is that?
Sir, some of the equipment that our advanced life support ambulance carries are narcotics. So because as paramedics, which both Chief Lambert and I still maintain our paramedic license, we're authorized and licensed to administer those medications. EMTs are not, so we would have to remove the narcotics off the ambulance per state law. They can't be there with the EMTs. Now, there may be some other medications that if it is a fully functional, basic life support ambulance, they don't need the cardiac medications and other things. But there's also situations where you keep it, those medications locked up, not the narcotics, but the other cardiac meds and the other advanced life support equipment. So if that unit, say, our three advanced life support ambulances were on calls for service, and we had the BLS there, you could take a paramedic off the fire engine and have them staff that BLS ambulance and now make it ALS. In several of the systems I've worked throughout the state, we had the ability to do that.
And I want to express, again, express my appreciation. I did an ambulance, well, I intended to do an ambulance ride-along. I sat around for about five hours, and there was no call out on a Saturday morning, so I didn't actually get to ride along in service. But I got a great tour of the inside of one of those ambulances. And the firefighter/paramedic who gave me the tour pointed out that the narcotics are locked in there, and only a paramedic or firefighter with a particular key to that combination can access them. So is it still necessary to remove the narcotics if if the access is restricted to a personal combination code?
My understanding of the state law is yes, sir. We couldn't have the narcotics on the ambulance without paramedics on the ambulance. But I will definitely double-check that to make sure the laws haven't changed since the last time I rode an ambulance.
Because it seems like it would give us maximum flexibility to leave each ambulance fully equipped in case firefighter or paramedic is available to to crew that.
Yes, sir.
Right, all right. Thank you.
So I think the critical thing for me was, you know, at the moment, we have one full-time ambulance that's, you know, a dedicated ambulance, and that's in Maraga. And what we're doing is we're, and that ambulance, if there's an accident on Highway twenty-four, goes to the accident on Highway twenty-four, which is not in Maraga. And now we're going to add an ambulance actually in Aranda, which means the ambulance in Maraga gets to stay in Maraga when there's an accident on Highway twenty-four or someplace else in Aranda, rather than being called out of Maraga to go respond to that. So we're actually, you know, not just keeping the ambulance in Maraga, we're actually leaving it there more more often and making it more responsive than it currently is. So it actually is helping everybody. It isn't just helping Aranda to have its own ambulance.
So I just directed Danziger. So if the board tonight approves the twenty-four-hour service in Maraga, my understanding is that the details of where ALS, where BLS will will be staffed is still to be worked out. Is that correct?
No, sir. Both, we'd have one ALS ambulance at Station Forty-five in Aranda. We'd have an ALS ambulance at Station Forty-one in Maraga. The backup ambulance would be at Station Forty-two in Maraga. The question would be is where do we put that BLS ambulance?
Right, okay. But those details, we we haven't discussed that to that level here, right? Those are still going to be worked out. Okay, and so other parts of this that is still going to be worked out would include the cost. So I'm, I heard Carol talk about the costs of staffing that. It was an ALS ambulance she was talking about. So, you know, I've looked at the numbers myself, and, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly where the numbers of, I haven't seen detail for where the numbers come out, where I'm hearing you talk about, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And here in the report, it says a hundred, additional a hundred and thirty thousand for six-month operation of Medic forty-one A on a twenty-four-hour-per-day versus a ten-hour-per-day basis. So I I'm, I I really will need to see the detail on, to see how these numbers actually work out. And that, and I would still like to see the comparison, like the full, this, the full rollout plan of, and I know we're not there yet, but I I need to see the numbers. And, you know, I would like to see a comparison of the numbers of a proposed plan for the single role. I would also like to see it compared to our current model, what we currently have. And then also, I mean, you know, in the in the past, we have talked about just staffing an additional ambulance in our current model with firefighter/paramedics. That that was discussed for for years. And, you know, the idea about the single role, there's, there's a lot of factors in single role. But one of them is that we would get more coverage at less cost. That that's in my head. That's what I'm thinking from.
That was, that was never the, never the plan. It always was cost.
That's what I'm thinking. But I still have not seen, I would like to see at some point, when we start working on this, I still want to see what would be the difference between doing this model that we're talking about right here and just staffing another ambulance with firefighter/medics as the same model we have. I I just don't know, after hearing all, everything involved in hiring eighteen new people versus, and plus interns, I don't know if that even includes the interns, versus hiring just six firefighter/medics.
We did that math last year.
I would like to see it with the new numbers, with the new contract. At some point, I would just like to see that on paper, to see, to see the difference.
So. So I I think we have to be careful of what we're asking the staff to do. So I'm not supportive of asking them to do that again, because we already did this once. We went through what the costs were, what the benefits of of having it be a single role paramedic that the board had voted on, voted on, the idea of having a single role paramedic and the idea that was better. The only modification we made to that plan is that instead of having, because we we thought there was a lot less traffic at night than there were, you know, calls than there really are, we're only changing it from having one during the day and three at night to having two all the time. But it's all still single role paramedics, and the math is compelling. As Carol already pointed out, that we have to, that, you know, the pension costs, for example, are extremely high for the for the firefighter.
I understand.
So I think we, we, personally, I would vote that we, or move that we do not have them redo all the analysis that's already been done and already been voted on. I think we've already done that math, and we should just approve what's in the in the plan for today.
Okay, I'd like to just echo that. I remember exactly what Carol said a few months ago, that the pension cost, the pension savings of this is, it dwarfs the annual costs. You know, the, I'm sure everybody in the audience and listening realizes that the pension obligations of most state and special districts, including this one, are unsustainable. We have a responsibility as a board to keep those costs in check in order to protect pensions of the present firefighters. And this is a huge step toward keeping those costs in line, correct? Isn't that what you told us two months ago or one month ago or most of the times?
I did tell you that because there was like a sixty basis point difference between a safety officer pension that you build every year and a non-safety position. I I'm sure we could dig out what we gave the board in prior months. I know that that this district negotiated in good faith with the bargaining units, this program. And so I wouldn't want to jeopardize anything that has happened in that arena as well. But we can definitely provide you with what we had before.
If everyone's been, is fully confident that this program is 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 more cost-efficient and we're going to get more service, then I'm okay. But I I wasn't convinced of that. I haven't seen, now that I see this piece of paper right here, I haven't seen this compared to what it would cost to hire six firefighter/paramedics.
I could probably put that.
Maybe I'm totally off, but, you know, that would be, you know, the same model we have. You don't have to go through training. We wouldn't have to hire another supervisor. I mean, there's a lot of factors there, so.
But we've been over all this. We voted on all this. We approved the budgets for all of this in the past. And so, you know, if you want to give the data to Director Danziger, that's great. But as a board, I personally don't want it, and I'd like to understand if the other people on the board want to have the staff spend a lot of time to recreate all that, because I think we've already been over this and already have the board's approval to do this. We have.
Okay.
We need to take any motions.
Um, Carol's still presenting. So I didn't know, Deputy Chief Lambert, do you have an update on the apparatus discount that we might be able to get if we were to sign those those purchase orders before June 30th?
Yeah, good evening, directors. So as as requested and reflected in the proposed budget, we have one type-one and one type-three, as as requested, to support our fleet. It it's unknown at the time as to the expected increases that we can see from manufacturers. But what we do know is is that we do anticipate some increases effective July one. Preliminary expectations are somewhere in the three to five percent, as as indicated. But they are also navigating some of the, some of the world economy challenges that we're seeing. So I think that there is a possibility that if we were to react quickly enough before the July one deadline, that we could defer those increases before July one, which would result in a significant cost savings to us. We certainly hope that, just as a, as a reminder, we hope that we can receive the apparatus as fast as possible. However, communication with other agencies in the manufacturer still indicate that they are still delayed. And they're they're citing three years, which we've seen with this last order that we have on the books, which is now parlayed into four years. So working with Carol and Glorian to determine if there's opportunities for us to 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 agree to contract to bring forward to you for vote that to to hopefully take advantage of the savings before July one.
So I just have a quick question. So I think on the engine, we have currently have an order. We paid a slight premium, five or six percent or something, it seems slight now, to agree to buy it, but it was a slightly higher price. But now that it's going to be four years, we're, the alternative was to have four different years of increases and pay for it. You know, we still get to pay for it at the end and not, and only pay six percent more versus, you know, and keep the money all the time and earn interest on it. So is that the same kind of thing that's going to happen again? We're going to pay a premium upfront and then, or are we just signing a contract before they raise the price?
Yes, sir, we do. So we are still waiting on the quotes. And then once the quotes come back from the engineering, we'll go line by line. We have a committee working on it to make sure that it meets meets our needs and requests and and specifications. But I do anticipate that that option would still remain, where we can pay upfront and receive a discounted cost, or we could commit through contract, as we've done with our previous purchase, and and pay at time of delivery. And we do receive, there are some some penalties associated with that. But as as we've discussed in the past, we do maintain that money. It's encumbered and invested, and we earn the money on the investments.
So you think you'll have all that figured out by next month when we can vote on this?
Oh, we certainly hope so. Staff's working diligently to, and putting pressure on the on the vendors to provide us with the quotes in hopes that we can bring an option forward to the board by June to be voted on and and carried out.
And which numbers in the budget? And which number is in the budget then?
I'm sorry?
What, what number is it? Which version is in the budget or is it just a guess?
In the budget, we have 1.5 million for engine one and 500,000 for engine three.
But how do we come up with that number if we don't have a bid from the company yet?
Yeah, those are, those are numbers that, that we were gaining from other agencies that have placed like orders. But again, you know, it's incumbent upon our committees that are working on it. And then, like, like Carol had mentioned as well, deducting things that, that are not needed and that also meet our current specifications. One of the challenges that we're facing right now is emissions. So the, the motor, the engines that are, were in our previous specification have been discontinued by Cummins Diesel. And new state emissions have, have tightened that are, are challenging. So we're looking at, at other specifications that, that can meet the requirements by the state. And contrary to popular belief, emergency vehicles are not exempt from emission standards.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any inquiry into electric vehicles? We, we saw one last year and it was pretty cool. I mean, looking at least and the, the features of it. But we discussed this last year, they're about 50% more expensive. It's almost a budget breaker. I'd love to have an electric fire truck. I think I would feel great about the emissions, but not at the prices that they're charging for them.
Yeah, we, we certainly have. And, and we pay attention to other alternatives, other manufacturers, many, many other options to explore. And my opinion and the opinion of, of the committee and then other resources, right now, cost versus gain is just not there. With technologies of where they're at and the, and the needs of, and reliabilities of, of electric fire vehicles, it's just not there. I do think as, as technology continues to advance, that would likely change.
Yeah, and so you want to drive that up to Tahoe to be responsive to a FEMA call and have to charge four pounds on the way to get there? And then you don't have any place to charge when you're there? Or when you have an earthquake and your power all goes out and there's no way to charge it?
Yeah. And, and that's another point, the infrastructure to support those, those changes.
Okay, so we've talked about this. This is what I just handed out to you. So you can see the additional costs. Excuse me. The reason we have six months is we've, we have put in play a program that starts effective January 1 of 2026. We're hiring up over the next few months to get all of that staffing hired and trained and ready to be responsive to the community. And next slide.
So Carol, one minute. What you just gave us for, for medic 41, can we assume that it'd be the same for 45?
Uh, no, sir. That cost was already built in to medic 45. So we were taking the medic 41 employees, full-time employees, working a 40-hour work week, changing them to the 4896, which medic 45 is already budgeted for.
Got it. Got it.
Okay. Question, medic 45 though, isn't paying overtime. These are already?
Today, it will be.
No, they'll, they'll get overtime based on the work schedule served. That was already built into the cost of the employees.
It's exactly, it's exactly the same number then. It's just it was already built into the budget is my question.
Got it.
Sorry, I'm just.
Right, no, I saw, I was trying to figure. So what I'm trying to do in my head, at least looking at this, is figuring out the total cost of this program.
Total cost of the single role is 520, it sounds like.
Well, we still, and we have a supervisor.
Oh, okay.
Which isn't on there. So I mean, there's more costs.
More than the staff. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, but we did, we literally went up for all of this last year and it was.
Last year, okay.
1.2.
This is this year.
It's the same numbers. We just add 5% to it. But we approved it. Let me just say, but we approved it last year. The math is all there. We literally showed what it costs to have a single role. It was like 1.2 million dollars versus doing it this way. It was, it was roughly half as much. That's the reason we decided to do the whole thing. We had the whole negotiation with the, with the firefighter union to do it. It's been done. And I'd like to actually get an opinion from the board to know whether to give staff direction to go do that work or not to do that work.
No, it's redoing what's already been done.
I don't think we need to redo it.
I agree.
You have an opinion, John? Do, do you want them to re, do you want them to redo the numbers? Do you have an opinion either way?
Mute your microphone, Director Dex, please. If you could.
No.
Thank you.
Sounds like four to one against to me.
I didn't vote. Oh, you want to go ahead? I, I didn't hear a vote. Were we?
No, we're just getting opinion.
It's, it's direction. Need a vote on direction?
Let's just move on.
You should feel free to express your opinion. You should feel free to express your opinion.
I'm okay. I'm ready to do it.
Okay.
So are there any other board questions or directions? Otherwise, we will take what we've talked about tonight, put it in your, your, your new and improved final adopted budget, and we'll bring it back to you in June for a public hearing.
And after public comment, they'll need to approve the preliminary budget for this evening.
That's correct.
By motion.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And we're getting ready to open public comment. I know there's a lot of people here that might have comments to be made. I did have a question for council. Usually we have a three-minute limit on it. We, as a board, at least, discuss whether that should be decreased to two to make sure everybody has added.
That's, that's absolutely within your discretion.
Does anybody have an opinion or are they okay with?
I need you to unmute your microphone.
I'm not even sure people would need two, but I think two is more reasonable than three and it gives everybody a chance to talk.
Okay. Anybody else have an opinion?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
We'll, we'll open up to public comment, but please try to keep your comments to two minutes. We're going to, we recognize the mayor of Maraga, Steve Wolke. He's been sitting here patiently. So we'd like to start public comment with Mayor Wolke, and thank you for attending.
Thank you and good evening. And I wish to start by saying how much we appreciate MOFD, the staff, the firefighters, the management, and also the board. I, I really appreciate the time that you guys put into this. I am Steve Wolke. I'm the mayor of Maraga. Also representing the town government tonight, we have town council members, Brian Dolan and, and also Graham Teal and Lisa Maggio, as well as our town manager, Scott Mitnick. I am here to reinforce our letter that's in the public record, and this is per unanimous decision of the Maraga Town Council. Representing the citizens of Maraga, we strongly urge the MOFD Board of Directors to approve full funding for the 24-hour per day ambulance service at Maraga Fire Station 41 as recommended in both agenda items 6.3 and 6.4. The Maraga Town Council concurs that maintaining dedicated 24/7 local MOFD ambulance service from Maraga Fire Station 41 is in the best community's interest for multiple reasons. First, the original and continuing basis for maintaining an independent fire district is to provide high-quality firefighting and ambulance services throughout the entire district. Secondly, the ability to quickly and timely transport southern MOFD district patients to area hospitals 24/7 is critical. For certain patients, it could be the matter of life or death. A notable percentage of Maraga residents live in the southern and more remote areas of MOFD service, also along with residents of Southern Arinda and the unincorporated community of Canyon, which inherently, by being that far, increases away from Highway 24, increases the travel time to area hospitals. Maraga also has at-risk populations, including elderly residents living independently, multiple assisted living facilities, and students, faculty, and visitors to St. Mary's College, which are located far away from Fire Station 45 in Arinda. As a result, the Maraga Town Council respectively requests that the MOFD Board of Directors support the recommendation of your fire chief to fully fund ambulance service at Maraga Fire Station 41. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. And, and thank you for the town council for coming.
Yeah.
And I'm receiving the public comment cards now. So if Graham Teal could come?
Hey, my name is Graham Teal, 956 Bon Jocanion Road, Maraga. Although I'm a former volunteer planning commissioner and current town council member, I'm speaking tonight as a father driving his daughter home from an after-school event Friday evening, May 16. As I'm keen aware, the three-minute limitation were reduced to two minutes. I would, before I begin, like to ask the board to grant me just one more minute. As if I'm just limited to three, I can only speak to the response time and exemplary service provided by Maraga Police Department. Grant me one more minute for allowing me to speak to the response time and exemplary service provided by Maraga in the fire district and their ambulance service on the evening of May 16. May I please have four minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. On May 16, my daughter and I were a half mile from our home, driving on St. Mary's Road. I saw a white cargo van stopped just before the intersection of Stanford Road. When we passed the van, I saw a car halfway in the intersection with the entire front end smashed in. As I turned on Stafford, the driver had just exited the vehicle along with the two passengers. I saw their airbags had deployed and asked them if they were okay. They said they were and they had their phones out calling emergency services. I turned around, parked, left my lights on to illuminate the scene, and I turned to my daughter. I asked her to sit tight and told her that I needed to check on them to truly make sure they were okay and stay with them until help arrived. I told her it would just be a few minutes. I work in construction, have a hard hat, high-visibility vest in my trunk along with the flashlight. I put on the vest, grabbed the flashlight, thinking that if everyone was truly okay and they had already called emergency services with a damaged car halfway in the intersection on a two-lane road, I needed to keep traffic moving so emergency services would not be stuck in the backup. One minute. I rechecked in with the driver, two passengers. I said, we need to be sure that we're not in shock and truly weren't injured. Then we confirmed they were okay. And as they were still in the phone dispatch, they told me help would be arriving soon. I told them I know. Two minutes. I stepped into the intersection, waiting traffic through one lane and then the other, keeping cars out of the debris and the fluid that was streaming from the damaged car. The whole time, I was listening for sirens and looking for lights. The whole time. It's three minutes. Within three minutes of their call, two Maraga police officers arrived, one from the east and one from the west within seconds of each other. The first officer got out. I told him I didn't witness the accident, but stopped to make sure everyone was okay. They told me they weren't, which is why I was directing traffic. He told me he'd check on me first and relieve me when he too knew that they were okay and when MOFD arrived. As he approached them, I heard another pair of sirens and saw another set of lights. It was MOFD, first the fire truck and then the ambulance arriving from the west. Police had checked in with those involved in the accident. And as I stopped incoming traffic from the east, they directed the fire truck and ambulance into position. The whole time, four minutes. Within four minutes, the full suite emergency services had arrived. Police secured the scene, firefighters were deploying the spill kit, and the paramedics were attending to those involved in the accident. Had they been seriously injured, they would have been stabilized, transported immediately to the nearest trauma center. Four minutes. As the last seconds tick away from my allotted time to speak, I ask MOFD board to not let the seconds tick away from their ambulance response time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Dolan?
Good evening, Brian Dolan, also a Maraga Town Council person. I'm just here to support the comments of the mayor and my colleague Graham, and appreciate the recommendation from your chief, and I hope the board follows it. Lots of folks in Maraga contacted us, friends, neighbors, very concerned about any reduction in ambulance service. If we hadn't assured them, we thought you were going to do the right thing. I think you'd have even more people here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Olson?
Good evening. Now that you will be restoring floor ambulance service 24/7 to Station 41, that's a really important and major step. I have rave reservations about the, the reduction from eight to six firefighters in Maraga. And I would point out that at the same time, in Arinda, the number of firefighters is going to stay stable at eight, at 10. And the loss of those two firefighters can have potential consequences, including what our insurance companies think about entities that cut firefighters when we're facing the wildland crises that we currently are. Since I've heard comments about this as a so-called three ambulance plan at one, one point in time, I would say that before you restored the 14, it was actually a 1.4 ambulance because the EMT BLS ambulance is, I'm not going to say worthless, but of very limited quality. It provides a fancy taxi service from, for people who really could probably get there by themselves. That's, that's essentially its nature as it's employed by AMR over in Confire. And as I listen to, and as I listen to fire radio traffic, I frequently hear those BLS ambulances calling for a quick ALS backup. So that's a risk when you, if you want to staff them that way. And my final comment, if I may, I long advocated what Danzy had just mentioned. And in fact, when I was vice chair of the committee that put together the LAFCO application, that was what I pitched. Same service at Station 45, 45, as the Maraga Fire District had long, long had at Station 41. I'd like to see those numbers. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
We have two Zoom, hands raised? If you could please state your name for the record.
Yes, this is Mike McClure, former mayor of Maraga.
Go ahead.
Good evening, board members and Fire Chief Isaacs. Thank you for moving this agenda item earlier in the meeting. First, I'd like to state my overall very high satisfaction of MOFD and the fire safety and ambulance services you provide today. We are well-served by MOFD. I'd also like to applaud the ability to ask questions over Zoom in this hybrid format. Tonight, I need to share my objection to reducing ambulance service, reducing hours from 24 to 10 hours locally in Maraga, and moving that service 15 minutes or more away across Highway 24. Whatever the serious illness doctors and medical experts agree, the need to get help to people ASAP when a major health event occurs. A fast response time and getting medical attention has these medical benefits. Prevents complications and irreversible damage, improves survival rates and reduces complications, saves time and money, provides peace of mind in our community, the 24-hour service is close at hand, can make a difference between a smooth recovery and. and serious complications, and most importantly, can and will save lives. MOFD Board, please vote for saving lives. Ambulance service is in your charter. We pay tax dollars for this, and saving lives is what you do. I thank staff for revising ambulance service back to today's level of 24 hours and asked the board to approve this level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dan Albana?
Good evening, Board. My name is Dan Albana, fire captain with MOFD and also 1230, local 1230 representative. I just wanted to make a clarifying comment. One of the board directors said about the ambulance coming from, for Highway 24 calls, V-oc's and the calls, the ambulance coming from Moraga, the way our current level is with the cross-staff is that Medic 45 gets cross-staffed and, you know, the medic goes out for the freeway calls, and then we likely get Truck 44 along with Engine 43 for most calls along Highway 24. So the Moraga ambulance with our current staffing, Medic 41, does remain in Moraga. That was, I just wanted to make that clarifying comment unless I misunderstood what was said by one of the board directors. But just wanted to clarify that so we understand more the basis of a response matrix that we have and how single role will affect that. Thank you.
I guess to clarify my comment, I might have misspoken, I'd say Highway 24. I was giving an example of a call that happened in the last month in North Arinda, and the fire truck showed up and the EMTs were there, which was great. And the person said, gee, I need to go to the hospital. And they said, well, it's going to be 15 to 20 minutes until the ambulance from Moraga in Station 41 shows up. So the gentleman, his wife was having a stroke, drove his wife to the hospital himself because it was going to be, he was going to get to the hospital about the time the ambulance got to him. So that's the problem with having only one ambulance that's staffed as an ambulance in Moraga. So now that's why it's better to have two. As a real-world example.
And then we have, go ahead.
And Scott, Scott McNick?
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I do want to say just one thing. And again, to echo what the mayor and council members said, thank you for the consideration to retain the ambulance service at 24 hours. I do want to share with the board the appreciation for the professionalism and spirit of cooperation with your chief and your assistant chief. When this was brought to my attention just a couple weeks ago, and I called over to the fire chief and we immediately had a meeting and explained the situation, and we were able to go over the numbers in a very professional analytical way. I just wanted to understand the math and the numbers and all of that. And so he was, your staff was very professional and cooperative, and I wanted to say thank you. And good luck with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our remote and in-person public comment. I did want to note that we did receive, we received 123 written public comments today by 3:00 PM. Those written comments are available on our website and have been sent to the directors. I've also summarized each name of the public comments, and that is also on our website.
I want to thank the people of Moraga for being so involved and caring so much. And we, I'm hoping they're going to react appropriately.
Gordon, did you?
Yeah, no problem. Are you able to come? I can bring the microphone to you.
It'll be all right if I talk a lot enough for everybody.
I act.
You talk a lot enough for me. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, directors. My name is Gordon Nathan, 51 car drive in Moraga. 55, ongoing and 56-year resident. Was a volunteer firefighter in the old Moraga Fire District back in the late 60s, early 70s. And I was on board as a commissioner and also as an elected official for two, little over two terms. So the one thing that I, and I think everybody's doing a terrific job, but I went back a little bit of history when the MOFD first began in 97, had a new district, new people, leadership, and so on and so forth. But one of the things that I remember, and I looked it up on MOFD's current website, was the SOC, Standards of Coverage. In 2006, we had our first Standards of Coverage review and recommendations. Then in 2016, there was another one. And the only comment I want to make is that I think if it hasn't already been planned or in the works, I strongly suggest that you get ready to do another Standards of Coverage review. And maybe it's in the works, and I see some heads shaking. So that's good news if that's correct.
Yeah.
So that's great. And I think what you do tonight, the letters that people have written and comments that are made, I think makes it even more important that that review be out in no less than 10 years from our last one, which was in 2016. So that's all I have to say. Everybody's doing a terrific job, love the fire district and stand behind them. But it's a tough decision. And the one last thing I want to point out in that original Standards of Coverage review, and there's a comment here which I highlighted as part of the chief's recommendation and comments in the introduction. Community expectations are an important and relevant factor in the process. And I think you've heard tonight some of those expectations, and you may hear many as time moves on. So keep that in the back of the mind as we sit out here and listen to what's going on. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gordon. Thank you.
We have one more public comment. David Trotter?
Good evening, chair members of the board. My name is David Trotter. Been a resident of Moraga since 1988. Relative newcomer compared to Gordon Nathan, who's a very good friend. I also served for three terms on the Moraga Town Council, three years as mayor. In 2013, some of you may recall that a citizen group in Arinda leveled certain accusations against MOFD that somehow you were not providing for equal service in Arinda and Moraga. And they convened a tri-agency group consisting of representatives from the Moraga Town Council, the Arinda Town Council, and MOFD. I was deemed to be, as the mayor at the time, the least biased representative. And so I was given the task of actually chairing that tri-agency effort, which actually got to a very good outcome. I enjoyed working with your predecessors on the board at that time. And I just have a question, a clarification. Actually, I mean, as a council member, as a mayor, I love to nail ambiguities and make sure we understand each other clearly and are communicating clearly. And so there was a slide that said that this was going to be a single-row paramedic program 24 hours in Moraga. And then there's been discussion about, you know, whether a particular ambulance is staffed in an ALS versus a VLS manner. And I'm just trying to understand whether, in fact, in Moraga on a 24-hour basis, these are going to be staffed by a certified paramedic at all times and would qualify for as being ALS service levels as opposed to VLS service levels? Because that was not made clear as far as I can tell in the communications that I've received tonight. Can somebody respond to that?
Yes, sir. The 24-hour ambulance as proposed in Moraga would be an advanced life-supported ambulance with a licensed paramedic on it.
At all times?
At all times.
Okay. Pardon me?
Both ambulances that are, I have two now. Two dedicated, but will both be ALS ambulances, in Arinda and Moraga.
Okay, all right. Trying to link these concepts. For those of us who don't play in this field, this particular standpoint, 100% of the time, I appreciate your clarification, and we will hold you to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that now concludes our public comment.
So we need a motion? Do we need a motion? We're supposed to approve the preliminary budget, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I, can you unmute your microphone, please?
So we're supposed to have a motion to approve the preliminary budget, right? It said approve on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
So I move that we approve the preliminary budget as presented.
Can I raise one issue that has to do with this? It's collateral.
We actually have to.
We do. You need a second first, and then you can debate it.
Oh, well, I will second.
No, you can, you're free to comment. I'm not quite sure. Is it an alternative issue? Or is it germane? So I said earlier that I think the Board of Directors, one of its primary responsibilities is to be responsive to the community. I hope it's apparent to everyone here that we have that. Because as I read the board, I'm pretty sure that we're all in agreement that we are going to approve the preliminary budget that fully staffs the Moraga Station with a 24-hour ambulance. One of the other responsibilities of the board, and I think those of you who have particularly served in public office or are serving in public office or have served on the Moraga-Arinda Fire Protection District Board of Directors are also very aware that another primary responsibility of the board is to make sure that we can continue to provide these services by paying for the services that we provide. And there has been, at various times, a controversy in this community regarding whether Arinda is paying more or Moraga is paying more. What is a fair share? And for the last several years, we do have a mechanism. As you all know, this board cannot raise or affect property taxes. The Arinda Fire Flow Tax is set at law, and we cannot raise that either. We do have the ability, we have the power.
That's a different agenda item, but yes.
Yeah, but it's on the agenda later this. As full fairness to the folks in Moraga who are here, I want to raise the issue now rather than have it raised and people not know about it. It's possible for this board, on the agenda later this night, to adjust the Moraga Fire Flow Tax. As I understand it, it's at six cents a unit now. And I'm doing mental calculations, but for, if we raise that to about 14 cents rather than six cents, it would cost the average Moraga resident about 29 cents a day. Like I say, when I've had the opportunity to vote on this issue before, I have vociferously said, I do not like raising taxes. People do not like to have their taxes raised. But if we have a responsibility to see that our services are paid for, is it worth? Is it worth it to the elected officials, to the residents of Moraga, to pay an additional 29 cents a day to have that ambulance staffed for 24 hours? I'm anticipating that we're not going to change the fuel tax this evening. But I'm curious as to what people would react if they were asked that question. Because as a genuine, as an expression of commitment to the community and to the joint ability of Moraga and Arinda to fund our operations, pay for our firefighters' pensions, pay for our very expensive equipment, and continue to operate this special district at the highest levels, how much are we willing to chip in for that? Again, I bring that up because many of you may be leaving, and I don't want any of you to be blindsided. But I'm willing to accept the possibility that maybe last year and the year before I was wrong in not raising that tax and that we ought to consider at some point adjusting the tax in order to raise the extra $260,000. That's all I have to say. Well, he said something. I'll say one thing. I just want to thank everyone for being here, everyone for tuning in at home. I really appreciate your interest in the MOFD, and it's great to see people here. We don't usually get a lot of people here. And I also want to just shout out to Dick Olson and Gordon Nathan for your long service to the community and to MOFD. Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. Dick wrote a very long and thoughtful letter. I read it very carefully, and I appreciate all of your input.
Okay, so we have a motion on?
You have a second?
We have a second.
We have a second, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Ready to vote?
Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Jex?
Hi.
Director Jorgens?
Hi.
Director Romer?
Hi.
President Hassler?
Hi.
And so for the next item on the agenda, how would you like to proceed?
I have a question. Does anybody need a break? We've been going for two hours, and we might be going for two more, so.
Okay.
We want a five-minute break?
The time is.
Well, can we go till, we convene at 9 o'clock?
Yes, so the time is 8:51, and we will reconvene at 9:00 PM.
Okay.
If we can go back to our seats now, the time is 9 o'clock.
Well, it rings.
Oh, I gave it to Christine.
So that's kind of, hopefully it's not alongside my car where it put the wallet.
So we're going to resume our meeting. If everyone can please take a seat.
I think there are going to be no extra people for this.
And the time is 9 o'clock, and all directors have returned back to the diocese. And what agenda item?
We proceed now with the public hearing. We're going to start at the top of the agenda. We're going to start at the top of the agenda and work through everything that hasn't been done.
Okay.
As expeditiously as we can.
All right.
I might add.
Almost there. All right.
Where'd everybody go?
Item 2.1, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 2503 Designating Fire Hazard Severity Zones, Establishing an Urban-Wildland Interface Community and Determining the Ordinance Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Good evening, directors. The item before you tonight is the Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 2503. This hearing in adoption of the ordinance adopts the fire hazard severity zone maps as presented to us by CAL FIRE in the Office of the State Fire Marshal. We did not make any changes to the maps as I said last month during the first reading. What these maps do do is change our wildland urban interface fire area from what was previously adopted in 2020. So what this ordinance will do is create, designate the whole fire district as a wildland urban interface fire area. And that is part of the Health and Safety Code because we are communities at risk. State law requires that the ember-resistant construction standard be applied for all new construction in those areas. So that's the two things our ordinance does. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
But you said there, as the Director Hassler, you said there's no changes from what we reviewed.
Correct. No changes from last month and no changes to the fire hazard severity zones as recommended by CAL FIRE.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, though. What about overall changes? You know, just a broad overview of the changes from our previous 2308 to now? I mean, is it, do you think, do you see? I mean, just how do you classify the changes?
If I can get clarification, sir. Changes to the fire hazard severity zones, the state?
Yeah, from previous, I mean, just generally.
We increased a lot of areas to very high fire hazard severity zone. Moraga picked up a lot. The west side of Moraga Way going down from Arinda to Moraga became very high, which was a change. But if you look north of the freeway, there's a section that came out. That is one of the questions we had when we first saw the maps, reached out to CAL FIRE to seek some clarification why an area that was previously designated as a high, moderate, or even very high, what changed to make that come out? Because the conditions on the ground haven't gotten better. And CAL FIRE refused to answer the question.
So in reading the comments that we received from some of our residents, I mean, those kind of questions came up. You know, why is part of Merrill Monte very high, part not? Wilder, you know, was another one that came up, other areas. But so is there, there's, is there no process to question their maps? Is it done deal? Or is there, there's, okay.
That's just correct. We can provide comments, and we can ask, they refuse to answer.
Okay.
And there is no process for us to take to them, hey, our questions, we want answers, or we want to disagree with it. There's no process.
And then just, you know, because we did get to comment, an individual resident has no, there's no process to question where their property sits? Okay. And.
Well, let me clarify that, if I may, sir. There is a process for them to ask the question. They're just not going to receive an answer back.
And my understanding too is CAL FIRE has not really disclosed their methodology and their mapping, how they did all this?
On the website, it talks about the different layers, and they took all this data, and this is what data they used to come out with this information. But what they're not doing is showing us their modeling, how their model created that. So if we have a question, it would be like peeling back an onion to say, okay, let's look at the fuels, let's look at the wind. What changed that area? That's the information they're not providing to us.
Yeah.
Sorry. So I heard that the models that they use do not include houses as fuel. And so as interesting as they are, I think when people look at that and they say, hey, I'm in a yellow zone, or I'm, you know, not in a very high fire severity zone. And so they're like, well, don't apply your rules to us because, you know, we're not in that kind of a zone. And the answer is, yeah, but your house is, you know, 14 feet away from the house next door, 20 feet away from the house next door. If it catches on fire, you're going to catch on fire. So the fact that they're in the red zone and you're in a yellow zone doesn't make any difference because you're both going to burn down, unless you do better things. So I think that's one of the big things we need to try to communicate to people is, what color zone they're in is interesting from a CAL FIRE standpoint. It appears that the insurance companies don't pay any attention to it. And because it doesn't include probably one of the more important variables that there is about fires and what, you know, what happened in Palisades, a lot of it was house-to-house stuff. So, you know, I think we don't want to put too much emphasis on for people about what zone they're in. It's really that they're in an area that has a lot of that around and a lot of fuel in general, and that they need to be aware that we're trying to do a good job of protecting them and putting in regulations that make them safer.
That's correct, sir.
All right, so we will go ahead and open the hearing. And preliminary board comments. You've received the written public comments, and those also were included in the first reading. We have not received any new public comments since the first reading. We do not have any hands raised, and we do not have any in-person public comment. Any further questions from the district board?
Do we approve this? What do we?
So in the end, yeah, so we are going through the public hearing process. So these are just the steps we have to go through. And at the end, then we will have a motion.
We'll have a motion. Okay, I just, it's a motion on there, so, okay.
So proposed action by the board, this would be our motion.
Are we ready for a motion?
We're ready for a motion.
This is Director Romer. I move, we waive the second reading, adopt ordinance number 25-03 in ordinance of Moraga-Arinda Fire Protection District of Contra Costa County, California Designating Fire Hazard Severity Zones, Establishing an Urban Wildlife Interface Community and Determining the Ordinance Is Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second it.
I second the motion.
Okay, and so now we will take public comment on the proposed action by the board. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment. Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Jex?
Hi.
Director Jorgens?
Hi.
Director Romer?
Hi.
President Hassler?
Hi.
Item three, announcements. Brief information reports related to meetings attended by a director at district expense. None, hearing none? Questions and informational comments from the board members, staff?
Yes, I have one. I just want to acknowledge that May 18th to May 24th is National EMS Week. It's a time to show our gratitude towards EMTs and paramedics who provide life-saving care across our nation every day. The theme this year is we care for everyone. And I'd like to just give a thanks to all those that serve.
That's great.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Communications received, none. We'll start with the fire chief updates, and we have the finance report.
Good evening, directors. And we have a brief finance report this evening. Strike Team Reimbursement Update. The estimated strike team receivable for this year is $1.7 million. We have received payments of $1.3 million. So the net receivable outstanding is $333,717. And this represents our strike team activity to date. We have received invoices from OES for all of that receivable, so the payment should be in process. Tunnel East Bay Hills Financial Update. The project budget was $6.3 million. Through 3/31, we invoiced to CAL FIRE $6.3 million, and the payments we received from CAL FIRE are $6.1. So the outstanding receivable is $186,245. That represents the final invoice for the grant. And that has been approved by CAL FIRE again, so we're just waiting for payment to be processed. Next slide, please. Treasury Bill Update. The district now has $34,440,000 invested in treasury bills. The treasury bill maturity dates are listed below, and we added the duration of the treasury bills on there as was requested at the last board meeting. Staff will continue to project cash flows to determine the amount of reinvestment available when treasury bills mature. And that concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
I noticed one of them says federal home loan bank instead of, you know, treasuries.
Yes, so what happened was we were looking for a treasury bill that had that maturity date, and we weren't able to get an exact treasury bill around that date, and we needed it for cash flow purposes. So there is a federal home loan bank bonds, which are very similar to treasury bills. They're very safe and within our investment policy. So we went ahead and did a 12-month federal home loan bank bond, which matured at the date that we needed it to mature.
You know, you can always pick something that's longer if you want to and just sell it early. Another way to do the same thing.
Yeah. But we thought it was a comparable investment.
Okay. Human Resources?
I have a brief Human Resources Recruitment Update. For the internal fire captain, fire captain, paramedic, two recruitment, the application period closed on May 4th. A decision was made to cancel the testing process and to extend the current eligibility list through 2027. The qualified applicants from this recruitment are the same individuals as on the current eligibility list. For ambulance supervisor, interviews were conducted on May 8th. A top candidate was identified and is currently moving through the background process. A recruitment for fire inspector plans examiner was released on April 21st and closed on May 1st. The current incumbent is limited term with the term expiring at the end of May. Interviews were hosted this past Monday, and I will have more information about this recruitment at the June board meeting. And unless there are any questions, that concludes my update.
I have one question. The ambulance supervisor, just assuming everything is okay, is there an anticipated start date?
So the position is budgeted starting July 1st, so they can't, the person will not be able to start sooner than that.
July 1?
July 1, yeah.
Okay. Great. That's great.
All right, thank you.
Fire Marshal Update.
Good evening, directors. Casey Irving, Fire Marshal. For this month's fire prevention report, initial inspections for evacuation routes are complete. Although inspections were conducted for four consecutive years and paused last year, my staff still issued 636 pre-citations. This demonstrates the ongoing and significant fire prevention challenges we're dealing with. Initial inspections for the dormitories are complete. I'm happy to report we have one dormitory in full compliance. I'm happy to report we have one dormitory in full compliance. One of our first ones in a couple of years. I continue to meet with St. Mary's on a monthly basis to address ongoing issues and support continued progress. I will encourage them to develop proactive policies, provide education, and promote accountability to prevent future violations. Are there any questions?
Yes. Okay. Is that your whole report?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to ask you about palm trees. Okay, so palm trees, there happens to be one in my neighborhood. It's probably 30 feet tall. No leaves or anything up until the very top, you know how palm tree is. But the fronds at the, right below the top of the tree are totally dead. So I just wonder where that falls. Is there any obligation from that homeowner to prune those dead fronds out? After hearing deputy chief talk about Southern California fires and seeing a lot of the pictures, I saw a lot of palm trees on fire. And I'm concerned about that palm tree, which is in my, my, happens to be in my neighborhood. I'm sure there's other ones around, so could you address palm trees to?
Sure, sure. Yeah, that's completely understandable. So as long as a palm tree is not dead or dying, it can remain. The requirement is to limit up six feet from the ground to six feet above.
The dead part, it's about 30 feet up, but it's?
We incurred removal of any dead or dying debris hazardous vegetation, but the requirement is from ground to six feet.
Casey, let me jump in there. Yes, sir, they're required to maintain the dead material out of the tree. So a tree that has branches, the six feet, but the dead palm fronds have to be removed. In my time working in Southern California, I went on numerous palm grove fires. When the winds start blowing in the desert and, you know, it jumps and that's how it happens. They don't maintain that dead material. So yes, it is required to maintain that.
Okay, I have just a couple of other questions. I'm looking at code enforcement violation counts. So for the month of March, the total was 243. For the month of April, it's 1,624. What's going on? I mean?
We began inspection of the evacuation routes in April, about mid-April.
So even though it's not May 30th yet, you already began the inspections?
Correct.
So are these violations from previously? I mean, people have until basically June 1st to comply with our ordinance. So I don't get it. Just, what am I missing?
If I may, sir. So the fire, our defensible space ordinance requires all the, all those requirements are required year round. They have to maintain their property in that condition year round. The only one they don't have to maintain is the annual grasses. So it's the annual grasses that are required to be cut by June 1st unless they've asked for, you know, time extension. And we usually grant, especially if we get the late rains like we have. But everything else that we're inspecting on the evacuation routes is part of that ordinance that they have to maintain year round. The tree limbing, the tree branches over the roadway and stuff like that.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you.
Thank you. Prescribed fire report?
Is Dennis online?
Dennis is not online. Let me check and see if he's part of an attendee. He is not in attendance today.
Okay, I will be happy to give a brief update. Dennis has been working very diligently to get fire on the ground. A lot of projects, burn pile projects as well as prescribed fire. This spring, as you can see, the, his prescribed fire projects, Arinda View Wildflower Restoration. This has been a couple of year project where we're going in and doing some pile burning as well as prescribed fire. And the property owners up there bought wild flyer, wild flower seeds. And after we burn it, they will spread the seed out to see if we can get the wildflowers to grow back in place of the non-native grasses. We're working with East Bay Mud and the Arinda School District for the Sleepy Hollow School Bear Ridge Project. We're also working at Station 44 to do some prescribed fire around the station and make the station more Zone Zero compliant. Ridge top fuel breaks, the Camp Lindo Painted Rocks and Aura Road Projects, Donald Drive and Mahollin. We're working with the city of Arinda staff to see if we can do burning up there along the ridge to enhance their defensible space that they've already created through their weed eating and goats. Also, we're working on Flicka Ridge that is part of the Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break. And to maintain that fuel break, we want to run prescribed fire through there. The other one, the land trust that's listed there, that is the old McCosker Ranch. It was purchased by a group that has Native American and some cultural value there. There's a lot of grant money that's coming out for the cultural burning. So Dennis is working with myself and we've reached out to the Diablo Fire Safe Council to see if we can get some grant funding to do more than just a little bit of cultural burning and pile burning that we've done there. I think it's around 40 acres, so it'd be really nice to get in there and treat a vast majority of that. Next slide, please, Marshall. Here is a picture of the burn plots for the Arinda View. And you could see the sign that the property owners up there got to put out near the burn areas. We get a lot of questions from residents when they see a black scar on the ground. So this is a way to help them understand what we're doing. Next slide. These are the burn projects I just listed. These are the ones we're working on for Sleepy Hollow and Bear Ridge. Part of the Bear Ridge piles or Unit 3 piles, the homeowners to do their defensible space to create their fuel breaks around the perimeter of the parcel, they couldn't remove the material. So they cut the material and in partnership with us, we said, if you have your contractor pile it, we're going to come back and we'll burn it for you to help them remove that hazardous vegetation. Next slide, please. There's the burn around Station 44. Next slide. These are the ridgestop fuel breaks. These are vegetation management type burns where we're removing hazardous vegetation. Also helps us in a training component, but these are also fire pathways. If you look, there's a lot of open space around these polygons, the footprint of where we want to burn. And that will help slow down fire if it gets going in those open areas before it enters into the community. Next slide, please. Here's the Flicka Ridge, starting at the bottom right of the screen and moving up. That's all part of the Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break. The plan is to burn every other plot or every couple of plots this year and go back on a return cycle and put fire in there. Because this is state responsibility area, we have to coordinate and plan with CAL FIRE. And as we're quickly transitioning into fire season and things are, fire activities increasing in the state, this is probably going to be a late fall, early winter type burn. I don't see us having the opportunity to burn anything this year. Next slide, please. Just a picture of the pile burning we did on the land trust. These were piles that were created during the construction of the Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break. Next slide. And that's it? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, can you unmute your microphone?
Yes, sir, we just need to coordinate with air quality. A lot of times when we go, we get ready to burn, it's weather dependent. We have to get the permits from air quality. We got to make sure that we have enough personnel. We use Confire Crew 12 has been a great partner in these types of projects. Our own firefighters, getting them out there. We try not to use the firefighters and take engines out of service to do pile burning, but when we do the broadcast burning, I think we'll see in the next couple of years through the budgetary process, increasing the budget for the prescribed fire so we can get out there and do more of this. Because as you said, sir, I think it's a great way to reduce the hazardous vegetation in our community.
Great, good, thank you.
Home Hardening Grant Program?
Good evening, directors. Casey Irving, Fire Marshal. Since the LA fires are annual abatement fire mailing and several community meetings, we've seen a steady and significant increase in interest in the Home Hardening Grant Program. The total expenditures to date are $499,245. So it's very clear that our MOFD messaging is well received. End of report.
Questions?
Thank you.
Operations?
No more.
Hi, good evening, directors. Lucas Lambert, Deputy Chief. I'll be giving tonight's operations report of significant events since our last meeting. Beginning with the event that you see before you on April 23rd, approximately 16:30 hours is a fire in the Colacott Tunnel in Boar Number 1. Partnership with CHP, Oakland Fire, Contra Costa County Fire. And of course, our firefighters responded to assist with the scene. We were able to mitigate the incident with those that were involved and limit the exposures to the incoming drivers. It did have an effect on traffic, as you can see, while we extinguished the fire and the vehicle was removed. One other thing that I'll mention regards to a meeting that Chief Isaacs and myself took last week with CHP leadership, Contra Costa County Division of CHP Captain and his lieutenant. We were able to meet, discuss best practices for roadway safeties, different incidents that we've had in the past and review in a partnership that we've forged with CHP. And we look forward to inviting them back to our communities with the Contra Costa County Operations Committee that we will be hosting next month. Next slide. And again, I know that many directors attended these events. This is the town hall meeting in, for emergency preparedness and fire safety in Maraga on April 21st and then again in Arinda on April 30th. Both of these events were very well attended by our community members. They were informative. We reviewed best practices, like I said, for emergency preparedness, fire safety, evacuations, and addressed questions from the communities. And we want to thank those that were able to come out and attend. Next slide. This is a picture on April 28th. I took this picture here to your left of an ambulance, marking the time at 07:35 on the 28th of a baby that was born in the back of the ambulance. So I know that there's, it's certainly not the plan of any expecting mother to deliver a baby in the back of an ambulance or maybe anywhere other than her choosing. But in this situation, we're grateful for the opportunity. The three firefighters that you see there to the right, you know, we're very sensitive to the calls that we respond to. It was a healthy baby girl that we're happy to report. Between those three firefighters, they have eight children. And of those eight children, there's six of them are girls in their families. So we were happy to explain that to the, to the mother and certainly are grateful for the opportunity to welcome a newborn baby to our fire district. Next slide. Training, as always, training is a significant event and very important to us. At this time of year, we stay very busy with preparations for wildland season or wildfire season, which we know is no longer necessarily a season with the events that occurred in Los Angeles in January. The tank that you see there to your left is a tank. It's a portable tank from our water tank. It holds 2,500 gallons and our crews are practicing drafting from that static source and supplying fire engines. Next slide. This is an accident off roadway. This occurred Pinehurst and Canyon. That picture to your left is a picture of Tablet Command. It's a software that is supported by our fire engines and all of our vehicles. It's real lifetime data that we receive from CAD or the computer aided dispatch device from our dispatch center. This incident occurred Pinehurst Road in Canyon, near the community of Canyon for the reports of a, what you see below. Overturned vehicle off the roadway. A person was stuck in the vehicle. I want to highlight response times. So call was signed at 19:15 hours. And first unit en route responding within 33 seconds of receiving the call. The first unit on scene was 7 minutes and 2 seconds. And if you know the district, like we all do, getting out to that area takes time. It's in a remote location. And then we're challenged with the best reporting locations that are taken from those that are making the reports. Those are very quick times. Contact within, contact with the patient down the hillside was within five minutes of the first arriving vehicle. And then the vehicle, or correction, the patient was extricated from the vehicle approximately 100 feet down the hillside. ALS intervention, as we were all informed tonight, advanced life support intervention was made. And then the first unit was en route to the hospital within 33 seconds. Correction, 33 minutes. Next slide. And this, I think, paints a different picture. So this is a rope system down the hillside of a vehicle that rolled down. One thing I want to note, on the other side, that's hard to depict from the picture, the down, the further downhill side of that vehicle is a steep cliff. It was held up by a tree that prevented the vehicle from rolling further. So I want to, again, highlight the fact that we were able to get there quickly. We were able to get resources down the hill, extricate the patient, get him back to the hill in the ambulance and then to definitive care at the hospital. Next slide. This is for the wildfire safety and prevention fair in Arinda that we attended on May 17th, just last weekend. I want to thank everybody that was able to attend. It was a great opportunity to share information about resources, public information, some of our programs that we offer here at MOFD in partnership with the city of Arinda as well. Next slide. This picture, and I understand it's difficult to see, but that's one of our ambulances that is on a flatbed truck and it's headed in for an ambulance remount. And as approved by the board for our current budget, the process is to remove that box that you see and put it on a new cabin chassis. This has been a long time coming for us to first find a vendor that is supportive and reactive to our timelines and then challenges with supply and labor shortages. This ambulance has over 130,000 miles on it. It's been used heavily and we start them up and we go right away as needed. So it's definitely well in need and we look forward to this completion. And it will go on a new 2025 E450 cabin chassis. Next slide. And last, we want to thank everybody that was able to attend on May 3rd to the Arinda Open House. This was another successful event for us to open our doors to the public. You hear me say it many times, that that's one of our favorite things to do and educate, to show people what we do. Everybody has a fire station in their neighborhoods, so it's an opportunity for us to show what goes on in the station and educate our public as well. So thank you for all that were able to attend and make it another successful event. Pending any questions, this concludes my report.
Thank you.
Public comment for announcements, items 3.1 to 3.4 is now open.
Public comment for announcements, items three point one to three point four is now open. And we do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment. Public comment for items that are not on the agenda is now open. We do have one hand raised. I also want to acknowledge the two written public comments that were submitted. And they were included in the packet. And I'm going to our remote participant. We do not have any in-person public comments. Mark Evans.
Good evening, Board of Directors and everyone else at this meeting. I just would like to have an opportunity at a future meeting. I hope this is the appropriate time to request an agenda item where I may provide an update on both the Moraga-Rinda Firewise Network. As you know, I'm the chairperson, as well as the Fire Safe Moraga-Rinda nonprofit. We've had some collaborative activity. We're wrapping up our third grant on FSMO, neighborhood grants, as well as it looks like we might be expanding to another thousand dwelling units within the fire district, which is greatly supported by the fire district. So my request is to have an opportunity to provide you a written presentation and present potentially at the June MOFD Board meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
I think we can add that to the agenda.
I'm very much in favor of having that on the agenda for next month.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
We have that on our agenda, or we will have that on the agenda?
Yes, sir, I will add that on there.
Next is Stephen Flynn. Go ahead, Stephen.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Good evening, everybody. I was just curious if there are any discussions on creating an escape route from the private road on Bollinger Canyon over to Alamo using either Bollinger Canyon Trail or Los Trumpus Trail? And if that would be an agenda item for discussion in the future?
Is that an escape route by walking? I don't think that's, that's a pretty steep pass. That's not drivable, is it?
No, sir, there's a washout at the end of Bollinger Canyon Road on East Bay Parks, East Bay Regional Park property. This has been a discussion item that has circulated among the Town of Moraga staff. I've talked to the town manager about it because folks have brought it up to him. To do that, Bollinger Canyon would have to be a twenty-eight foot wide road. It would have to meet the current standards. There is a lot of environmental and other concerns. So it's just in an extremely early discussion stage about, is it an option and what would it look like?
It's probably not even recommended as a
It's not.
electric bicycle or walking route because it's so wooded up there, right?
It's considered a dead-in road because of the washout. So I haven't had any need to bring it to the board for any type of discussion as we're not the landowner. And the landowners could, you know, submit through the plan review process to widen the road and do that type of stuff. But it's not something that, you know, we have any authority or jurisdiction over. We do have jurisdiction over the plans, but not the authority to initiate it.
So that's kind of a keep us posted item, but it's not an agenda item?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
And the land is owned by East Bay Med?
A lot of private property landowners in there. It's a mix. Where the washout is, is East Bay Regional Park.
Okay. So it sounds like we're being supportive of the idea, but it would be for other people to actually execute.
Yes, sir. If somebody wanted to make that an evacuation route, I think that would be a wonderful idea to have another route to get people out. We'll always support that, but we're the wrong ones to initiate it.
Okay, great, thank you.
We do not have any more hands raised or any in-person public comment. Now going on to the consent agenda item. So we will now open public comment for the consent agenda. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Moving through this item. Now we're on to item six point two, Quarter Three Financial Update and Budget Review, Fiscal Year 2025. Approved Fire Risk Reduction Grant Fund Expenditure Budget Adjustment Increase in the Amount of $10,000.
Good evening, President Hassler and members of the board. I'm here tonight to tell you good news. When you originally adopted the budget for this year, we had a general fund deficit of three hundred and eighteen thousand. That was before we applied any memorandum of understanding raises. And so the deficit got worse with that, but with salary savings and other savings and revenue coming in higher than projected, we're now looking at a third quarter deficit of about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And that's hopefully just going to get better. So the breakdown of that, we had properties come in, property tax come in at roughly two hundred thousand more than projected at this point, with interest income of about eighty-five thousand more than projected. Charges for services and ambulance fees are running around a hundred thousand dollars more than the fiscal year projection. And other revenues such as strike overtime revenues, sixty-two thousand dollars higher for about a four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar good positive to your revenue base. On the other side, you also have good news. Your expenditures due to some retirements have been reduced as far as salary and benefits to a little over half a million dollars. We did have some additional attorney fees and labor negotiation fees because we were in contract with the units and we had, I believe, some claims that had been filed against the district. But that was offset by recruiting costs of almost a hundred thousand dollars that were saved. And the expenditures look like they're coming in about almost six hundred thousand dollars less than projected. So between those two, the district's doing well. And it is estimated at the end of the fiscal year, you will have a fifty-three percent as far as your general fund available balance when applied to budgeted general fund revenues. So congratulations, you're over your fifty percent goal. Although, as we just talked about tonight, you have some big expenditures coming up, so you're going to be dipping into those reserves if you decide to do pay-as-you-go. The Capital Project Fund right now is estimated to end with a one point seven million dollar surplus. But again, we have some big expenditures coming in fiscal year twenty-six, but that will just have, that will be part of the funding of those expenditures. Your debt service fund is tracking as normal. It's a pretty simple little fund. And your Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break, that grant was closed or ended this year. And in your fiscal year twenty-six budget, we're going to transfer approximately seven hundred twenty-six thousand dollars into the general fund as an operating transfer in. We are asking for a ten thousand dollar budget adjustment for the Fire Risk Reduction Grant Fund. That will end in March of twenty-six. And then those two fuel mitigation positions will roll into the general fund. But for now, to finish off this year, we do need an additional ten thousand. As of March thirty-first, you had twenty-six point four million in your investment portfolio. And I expect in April or May, you're going to get about another fifteen to sixteen million dollars in property taxes. So that will help with that interest income as well. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer that.
I have one, Carol. In May, we get our supplemental property tax? That hasn't occurred yet.
It has not.
When they do it, the last day of May is that the way?
I like to hang on to that.
And so that's, in this update, we don't know what that is, so that's not in here yet.
Actually, we are expecting that to be, I want to say, it's either two hundred or six hundred thousand, I'm trying to remember.
And we just base that on history, like the past or?
It's, it is. I thought Gloria Ann had that in here.
It's here.
And I am sorry. Cannot remember it off the top of my head. Supplemental property tax revenue projected at six hundred thousand. And that'll be received in May.
It was projected to be six hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're anticipating that that will be the case.
And that's already in the budget?
Yes, it is.
At six hundred, okay. Can, just so we don't have to wait until the June meeting? Can you let, I guess, I guess I asked the chief, can you just tell us what that comes in at? Can you send an email to us when we get that? And I'd be curious to know.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that'd be great. Yeah, see how we did.
Okay, I'm going to read that down as well. Okay. So if I can have an approval for the?
So I move that we add?
So first, we're going to take public comment.
Thank you.
Public comment's open for item six two. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment.
So I move that we add ten thousand dollars to the grant fund expenditure budget adjustment.
Okay.
Second motion.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Item six point three, Long Range Financial Forecast, May 2025.
Okay, so basically, take you back for about an hour tonight. We've talked about the changes that were made to the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Those were also incorporated in the Long Range Financial Forecast. And we also received some additional information from Cecera, which shows some very nice rates coming up in another few years based on what they earned on their investment portfolio. Now, whether or not this comes to fruition is everyone's hope. But at least it looks positive and we're going to, we're going to hope for the best. But that has been incorporated into the Long Range Financial Forecast. I know that there was three years of spending for Station Forty-One. I think that that's probably more like two years of spending in order to get that station fully operational. And then we are looking for some direction on whether the board is interested in a pay-as-you-go or a debt financing or somewhere in between. Staff is happy to do that analysis for you to see just what's out there and how much it would cost. I know this board does not like debt, and I've heard that very loud and clear. But given that Station Forty-One has gotten so expensive, you might just want to have a presentation on what that market looks like right now and some scenarios to see if you want to do some options or to call, have the opportunity to issue debt for now and call that debt in early. It's up to you, but that would also affect the Long Range Financial Forecast.
What, what kind of interest rates is there a range? Any idea what we'd be looking at if we were to consider debt financing?
Right now, what we're looking at is either a public offering or a private placement. This is not going to the public and asking if you can issue bonds. One would include that you would do an official statement and actually get rated by an agency. Then your interest rate's a little lower. If you did a private placement, you wouldn't have to do all that staff work, but you're going to pay a little more in fees. And it's running between four point five and five point three right now. But we could check with the people that used before Opera Heimer, and they could give you some scenarios as to what you'd be looking at. Keeping in mind that if you have the cash in your pocket, you can keep your general fund policy in place and still earn on your investment portfolio. But again, you could probably ask ten people on the street and they'll give you ten different solutions to this one. So it's up to board direction on what you want to do.
I would just ask Director Jorgens.
You said the interest rate on the bonds would be about four and a half percent, right?
What we're hearing right now from the advisors is four and a half to five point three, depending on how much work you would want to do with an official statement and a rating agency.
Just a quick clarification, you and I spent some nice time talking about this earlier.
Can you move your microphone just a little?
I think the, the capitals, or the, I guess it's all capital spending. The construction spending is over two years, and you and I agree about that. So I think we put ten million dollars in each year. But there was also, I think, eight hundred thousand dollars that was spent in architectural and planning and all kinds of things that was happening next year. And then instead of having the construction part be over three years, we put it over two years.
That's correct, and I agree with that. I think that's much more realistic. So in your model now, you have three years of funding. And I agree with Director Jorgens. We can move that back to the two years of construction at ten million dollars each. But we still have yet to see what those actual bids are, so we're hoping. But I know Santa Monica Fire is building a similar station and their budget is around eighteen to twenty million dollars.
Question, and so the twenty million, I think we talked about this earlier today, is hard costs, right? It is not cost-free location or soft costs?
It includes everything.
That's all in, soft costs, everything?
Yep, because it was sixteen without soft, well, the station that we were basing that on was in, I don't know, Santa Taya or someplace that was sixteen, and then he said that the soft costs are often, you know, thirty to fifty percent. But we have some of the soft costs, the eight hundred, we have eight hundred thousand dollars of it in the first year.
Okay, just make, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have another third on top of that or half to pull this up.
Okay. And the other things that we changed, I know the board's direction last time was we decided not to build the admin building, but to go rent instead, which you, it's in the forecast you said, yeah.
Forecast as well.
And I think we put in maybe a little bit more money for forty-five remodel also, a little increase over what was in last time.
We did. And one thing you could do is you could fund the deficit that you see on your charts. There is a new chart at the DIAS with some creative ideas that one of your directors came up with. To not have a deficit in a fund, you can, per governmental accounting, have a deficit. You just have to document the deficit in your audit report and tell the reader how you're going to get out of it. So it's, it's not like you're going to get whacked too terribly if you have one. But it's always nice to keep your funds in a positive position.
Okay, you can also just transform more money in from the general fund, which is because we get to choose that every year anyway.
Exactly. The only problem with that is, like life, you have choices. And so your policy level that you want to keep in your general fund reserve, you're not going to be at fifty-three percent anymore. You're going to be more in the realm of around twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven was the lowest.
And then you'll, you'll start to increase again. But, you know, you're getting a great asset.
But the way, I think the way to think about it is, you know, we have, you know, money is all fluid. So whether you have it in a capital fund or the general fund, it's a reserve, right? I mean, it's still there. So I think this graph actually shows that some of those do, right?
That's true.
So, so the question is, you know, plus we have the? So, so the question is, you know, plus we have the, the reserves for the trust that we have, the pension trust. So to me, this looks, especially since we kind of dig ourselves back out of the hole, but worst cases, you take on some short-term debt, maybe for part of the year with the, the teeter plan. But that's better than taking on especially five percent, you know, debt that we would have with, with an outside, because that's more than we're going to be earning in interest. So, you know, that, that really costs money. And why, it's also more expensive than the teeter interest is, because it's short-term money versus long-term money.
That's correct.
So.
And asset-wise, I mean, we have the new asset. I mean, I know, I know. You could always secure it as an asset if you needed to.
Right, yeah, exactly. And, and not only that, hopefully the maintenance costs on a brand-new building are a lot lower than they are on a sixty-year-old building, so. You know, the lights all work, all that kind of stuff.
So I think what your long-range financial forecast says, which is a good thing, because you're looking in the future, is you can do it, you can, you can do the pay-as-you-go, but there's going to be some consequences with the dip in your general fund policy. Or if you wanted, you can do what a lot of people do with that intergenerational equity concept, and you can fund part of it through financing. Not all, you could either do one hundred percent or zero. It's kind of up to the board. You set the policy and we can run numbers for you if you want to see what it's going to look like. But you could give us some scenarios if you want to go down that road and we could look at ten, fifteen or twenty years. Kind of up to you, but.
I think there were some interesting questions that came up, you know, several years ago now, about kind of the legality of doing debt financing for a fire district without doing bonds. And the, and the structures that we had to go through to get there and the fact that we didn't have a four-fifths majority of the board to approve it. So I think actually the debt financing is a very controversial question. In addition to not being a philosophy that we have, at least in the past, expressed that we were supportive of. But it does take a four-fifths vote to approve it. But we set up, for example, I'm not sure we ever fixed it, but we set up an outside board that I think all the board members are members of. And we're, yeah. And we don't have meetings, so we, the, the corporate veil that that theoretically appeared to everybody doesn't really exist, because we've never had a single meeting about that, that board. So from a legal standpoint, there are lots of holes and lots of questions about what happened with the, you know, my personal insurance policies, for example, don't allow me to be on too many boards, because I guess many people would have that problem. So I'm not excited that I, by getting elected, I got put on a board that I didn't want to be on, that I'm still on, and all of us are. So that's another reason that I'm not in favor of debt financing.
I don't think we're in that bad of a situation that we would want to think about it. I think it's a year-by-year choice, a year-by-year discussion, and it doesn't seem like in the next two to three years, we need to think about it even.
I agree.
Do you have any other changes that you would like to make to the long-range financial forecast? We are going to shorten up that construction timeline for Station forty one. I think that's, that's a more realistic timeline. You could recommend to staff that we just transfer to eliminate any deficit in the capital project fund, transfer money from the, the general fund to make up that, that shortfall.
Just think from a planning, from a, you know, an ideal situation as far as how to present it, you know, we were supposed to be building a, a reserve based on the depreciation we have on the buildings beyond the model, the life of the model. And so I think we should leave those amounts in the capital fund. Because I think it actually started fairly recently, but as the grows, we ought to keep at least that amount. Instead of making it zero over here, I think we ought to leave that amount in. And otherwise, we should just fund it by, you know, taking as much as necessary to only have that, the depreciation amount, the cumulative depreciation amount in the capital fund as a minimum. And, and otherwise transfer the, the money from the general fund into the capital fund that's needed to actually, so I don't think we should have a deficit in there, that seems like.
Just to offset the depreciation, just to offset the annual depreciation, like a sinking fund.
Right, exactly. A sinking fund.
So to clarify, would you want to stop with the depreciation through the next fiscal year for a while? Until you get back up on that upswing and then start the depreciation again, or do you want to maintain the depreciation?
We get to earn interest on the money no matter where it is. So just for presentation purposes, which is really all this is anyway, I would, I would leave the, the sinking fund-type depreciation number in there that grows over time.
Okay.
Because that's, that's the whole idea, is that we're supposed to be, you know, we've, you, you, these, these things kind of have a, have a life cycle. You, you build up money and hopefully, but when you need to build something, you know, then you spend it, kind of back down, and you build it back up and you build a new thing, and so it's
Which is what?
What sinking funds do.
Yeah, but that's also what our budget shows, right?
Right.
We built, so over the past five years, we've built up, we're going to spend it, and then we're going to build up, because we won't have a new capital project in a foreseeable future.
A big one, you know.
After forty one, after forty one, oh, probably remodels.
Forty one or forty five.
Forty one, forty five, yeah.
Okay.
One of the things that we need to take a look at, that we didn't talk about in the audit committee, is the basis of the forty one station, what it is on the books for. The under appreciation and, and depreciated assets, maybe an adjustment or a shortening of the life of the remaining period before the demolition.
Okay.
I, I would assume that a sixty-year-old
Maybe it's a, it would be a non-cash write-off.
If there's any basis left at all.
Yeah.
If it's that old, unless we've done a lot of remodeling along the way.
Yeah. It would be mostly capitalized items, right, more recently that would be left in it. I, I would assume it's not millions of dollars left.
Yeah.
You can check.
Of course.
Otherwise, I think it looks great, great job in presenting it and in preparing it, thank you.
All Gloria Ann's prep, I just.
And, and we should version up the model so that it doesn't have hard-wired numbers in it, just generally, they should all be referenced someplace. We shouldn't have to go look inside of a model to see, oh, there's a number that's typed in instead of being a formula. So, because there is some of that.
Okay, any other comments?
Okay, we will open up the public comment on the long-range financial forecasts. We do not have any hands raised, and I do not have, didn't receive any written public comment.
So I guess we have one more round, you guys are, the final round gets next month, is that the deal?
I'm sorry to say that.
The, the, the long-range financial, the last round, you're going to do these things you just talked about, and then we approve it next, I guess we just accept it next month.
Yes, sir. And if I can just ask one clarifying question for the, the spreadsheet. Go through there and make sure that we have those numbers, they're not just input, but they,
They're based on a formula or something in the cell. Because at the moment, in the capital expenditures, it's, you know, like twenty million dollars minus some reference someplace else, and they shouldn't be, if there is a number like that, it ought to be highlighted as an input someplace rather than, we ought to understand how we got there. So you could go in and change the capital expenditure numbers and it would all flow through and, and work. Yeah.
Understood.
I don't think it's, I think there are only a limited number of things that that happens in, but there are a few.
Okay.
Since we don't have any public comment on this item, can move on to item six point five, CalPERS Office of Audit Services Employer Compliance Review, Health Contributions Review of April twenty twenty five.
Good evening, Directors, Christine Russell, Human Resources Manager. This is an informational report. The district contracts with CalPERS to provide medical insurance for active employees and retirees. In October of twenty twenty four, the district was notified by CalPERS that the, that we were selected as an employer to be included in a review of twenty eight contracting agencies' health contributions. The review was conducted by the CalPERS Office of Audit Services. The objective of the review was to gain an understanding of contracting agencies' processes and procedures to collect health contributions in accordance with health, health resolutions and government code of the Public Employees' Medical and Hospital Care Act. The review period was January first, twenty twenty four, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The auditor conducted field, fieldwork onsite at the admin offices for three days in October of twenty twenty four. And the results for the district are as follows. The district collected health contributions from employees, retirees and survivors as prescribed in the Health Resolution and Government Code. The district had additional health provisions per the terms of local, of the local twelve thirty MOU, MOF, CRA, MOU, and the Unrepresented Employee Handbook. The district did not have written procedures for collecting health contributions. And subsequently to the audit, we do, we have crafted those and we do have those now. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We can open up public comment on this item. And we do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment. Item six point six, adopt resolution twenty five oh seven, establishing the fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven fire flow tax rates for the Arinda and Maraga service zones.
Good evening, Directors. Every year, the district is required to set the rate for the fire flow tax in each of the districts to service zones. Note, the service zones do not match the municipal boundaries of the city of Arinda and town of Maraga. In order to place the tax on the county's accessory rules for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, the tax rate must be established by board action and then levied against each partial. The tax rate has been the same for the last few years. So staff just seeks direction from the board and establishing what the tax rate's going to be so we can give it to the county. Yeah, adopt the resolution, I'm sorry.
This is Director Roma. As I stated earlier, I thought it was only fair to raise this issue in the presence of half of Maraga when they were here in the audience. As most of the board members and staff will recall, I think I was the most vocal and vociferous opponent of raising of one of our Arinda residents' suggestions that we raise the Maraga fire fuel, fire flow tax. I'm wondering if I was wrong. I'm wondering if we should be open to the possibility that, given that this is our only source of raising, of increasing revenue, I'm, I'm trying to read the board here, and I don't think there's going to be any appetite for raising taxes, particularly among those whose constituencies are mostly Maragans. But maybe we should be open to it.
Maybe a question, this is the Maraga-Arinda fire flow tax, right? Both cities pay?
Fifty, fifty.
Well, it's They don't pay it or only Maraga pays? So if you, you could change the, okay, I don't think this is just a Maraga issue. I think if you were talking about the fire flow.
You can have it, you can change it in each one.
You can change it in each one?
Yeah.
So you could, so.
Can we change it? My understanding was that we're restricted to no more than six cents in the Arinda portion.
But you can raise the one in Maraga.
But we could raise it to as much as.
You can lower the one in Arinda. You can lower the one in Arinda.
Got it. I have no appetite.
You never have.
I don't have no appetite for it.
Well, we could raise it to thirty cents.
But I think the thing to, but at the moment, they're both the same, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is correct.
The thing to remember about this is it's not just, you know, there are certain constituents in our public that, that feel strongly about the fact that, you know, Arinda's paying more than Maraga is in taxes in general for the fire district. And that may be true, it is true actually, but the thing that I think people forget is that Maraga is paying more for the county jails and the county judges and a lot of other county services that we all get. Because back in nineteen seventy three or five, or whatever year Prop thirteen passed, you, they looked back two years and said, whatever percentage you're spending on each one of those line items that you get from the state, your property taxes, you pay, that's what you're going to keep paying forever. And, and you can't change it, you're just, that's what you're going to get, actually. It's not what you pay, it's what you, what you get and what you're going to be spending. And so Maraga pays a higher percentage than we do for the things that, other things we get from the county, and we pay a lower one, and we pay more for fire than they pay. So unless you're going to adjust both of those things, it's not fair to say, hey, you know, they need to pay the same amount we do for a fire, because they're going to come back and say, well, you need to pay the same amount we do for jail and everything else. So I, I think, you know, we're supposed to be one district, we ought to, you know, we're setting the taxes, and as far as I'm concerned, for the whole district. We're supposed to treat everybody as our one district, we're supposed to, you know, all, all of our bylaws and things and, and the plans that were adopted or voted on by the public all say we're supposed to be treated as one district, not as two separate entities. So I, I'm strongly in favor of not making them different between the two cities.
Is this an issue in any other combined fire district and that anybody knows of, council or staff? Is this unique to MOFD or is this something that other jurisdictions wrestle with?
I, I've not encountered it, but again, this is, this district is, is, hate to say, is kind of unique. Because of the way it was formed.
You should have been here, I don't know, six years ago when this came up strongly, and it was, there were twenty times as many people and twenty times the number of people that commented on it. So. You know, a lot of people spent a lot of time figuring out that it was the right answer already.
I, I agree with Director Jorgens that, that we should just keep it at six cents in, in each district, in each area. That the funds, we don't account for them by, by Maraga or Arinda, they're used throughout the district, and I just think we.
The funds are on the fire stations, you know, the fact that
Yeah.
that they're technically in one city or another, the answer is they got, where they got put because of, hopefully, coverage reasons, not because they were in one city. And many of them were pretty close to the border of the city, so it's all kind of random when people say, wow, we have more firefighters here, more fire stations there, whatever.
We all get serviced wherever.
Right.
You know, this has been a kind of an issue where mostly it was Arinda. Felt that the tax revenues generated there should be spent in Arinda, and the tax revenues in Maraga should be well, you'd be be really a very different configuration. We fought this before and said, no, fifty, fifty. And to, to my knowledge, I don't think there's any reason to raise this or change it.
I agree.
Agree.
As, as former Mayor Trotter said, we've looked at this in depth at least twice, I know of, so.
Yeah.
He was.
Formally with committees and things.
Yeah.
Twice, yeah. In addition to having just individuals look at it a lot.
Right.
I spent months looking at it when I first joined the board. You know. So. Do we need to have public comment and things, I guess?
Yes, we do need to have public comment. So public comment is now open. We have one in-person public comment.
You've been very patient waiting for all this to come up on the, you should have told us you were going to, this is what you want to talk about.
My name is William Carmen from Maraga.
I didn't catch this.
My name is William Carmen from Maraga. This is one of the reasons I stayed, is thank you for, Mike Roma, for announcing that this might be brought up. It is an issue that if you raise one city versus another, there will be a large debate and a lot of people will come out and some will protest, some will say it's fair. It's, if you were to raise it, it'd be best to seek out the public who's going to be paying the taxes before doing it. And sometimes it's better to put the issue on a ballot and ask them to do it that way. And let your, you know, it, it may cost money, but it's something to consider, getting the people involved in the discussion before raising it on them, because otherwise you may find hostility. And in the past, there's been hostility and debates on who sits on the board when people get elected and unelected. Just to consider that, thank you for your wisdom in letting us know that this issue would be brought up.
Sure.
Thank you for your comments.
That's why I brought it up. I didn't think it was fair to, to surprise it on anybody, but if I'm wondering if I've made the right decision in the past, I think it's worthwhile at least raising the issue. And it doesn't surprise me that there's no appetite on the board for changing things.
Well, it isn't just an appetite, I don't think it's logical. I, I think, I think it's been thought through, I think it's fair the way it is, and he, and the, the burden. And the burden is being shared, the overall burden of supporting our community, not only for the fire district, but for everything else.
Public service.
Public services in general. It's, you know, it's already been done properly. So.
We do not have any hands raised or any more in-person public comment. We did receive one written public comment from Steve Cohn, which was forwarded to the directors and is available on our website.
And I want the record to reflect, I read it again. Every year, I give him due consideration and.
So I move that we, we approve the, the six cents for each, for both. Again, this year, keep it the same, in other words.
A second.
Second by Hassler. Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
Director Roma?
Abstain.
And President Hassler?
Aye.
Item six point seven, Adopt Resolution Twenty-five oh six, Approving Board of Directors and Fire Chief Roles and Responsibilities, Policy to Require Board Approval of Employment Contracts for Part-Time Employees.
Good evening, directors. John Holzman, District Council. This item is, is, was brought at my request because it turned out that there was a, a contract and an OUPOL that I wasn't, wasn't aware of for a part-time employee that was never approved by the board. And that's, that was actually appropriate because it turns out that under, under the, the rules, the District Policy eleven, there was an exception specifically for, even though the, the board does approve all employment contracts, the exception was for part-time contracts that are, if the positions have been approved and budgeted. That struck me as, as a little bit odd. And so the proposal here is, is to delete that exception so that all employment contracts would be approved by, by this board. Now, just to be clear, that does not mean that you have to have an employment contract. There are unrepresented employees who are covered by the Unrep Handbook in the district and that's fine. It's just that if there is a separate contract, then, from the Unrep Handbook, then it should be sunshine. It should be done in a public way. And so that's why we're proposing this.
Makes sense.
So, question, so this is not a legal requirement, but it's better business practice?
Yes, it's, it's just from a transparency perspective, if you're committing yourself to a contract, generally speaking, that's in the board's profits.
And this is more of a correction, right?
It, it is. I mean, it's not, and it's fairly, you know, again, it's a federal minor issue. It's just, it only came up in the context of another matter and once we saw it, we thought we should fix it.
Yep. Great.
Public comment?
Public comment's now open. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment.
I move we adopt Resolution Twenty-five oh six, Approving the Board of Directors and Fire Chief Roles and Responsibilities, Policy to Require Board Approval of Employment Contracts for Part-Time Employees.
I second. Roma.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
Director Roma?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Item six point eight, Consider Nominating a Director as a Candidate for the Position of the Contra Costa Local Agency Formation Commission Special District Alternate Seat. Staff recommendation is to just determine if the board wishes to nominate a director.
Anybody want to go?
Then no action is.
I thought you might be interested.
No, you got to go to a meeting in Martinez on a Wednesday afternoon.
Yeah.
I'm busy on Wednesdays.
I'm, I'm not interested.
Yeah. It was all, it was over the pandemic. I, I had done it before, but it was pandemic. It was all Zoom. Now it's in person.
Okay, so we will open up public comment on this item. And we do not have any hands raised or written public comment. No motion is required. Item six point nine, Receive Status Update on Recruitment of a New Investment Advisor and Provide Direction to Staff.
This is still a little bit of a work in progress and we have been working with Director Jorgens on this matter. My suggestion, because we do have some, some new information, but the core question that, that was asked was, do we, under the existing setup, have to have a self-directed plan if we don't use the advisor that has been given to us? And the answer to that is apparently, yes, we do have to have a self-directed plan. But my recommendation is that we put this over until, I guess, the question is, is there going to be a special meeting? Because we have a number of other items that I, I do think that we need to deal with, one of which is we have not yet done the goal setting for the new chief. He's not so new anymore. The, so we, we do need to do that. I think that's something that's going to take, you know, we need a little space time-wise to do that, I think, to get to do, do that right. There are a couple of other items, I think, chief as well, right?
Yeah, we have the Station forty-five discussion that needs to happen. We got the cost estimate this morning. Chief Lambert and I are looking at it. We need to set up a meeting with the ad hoc committee to go through, review that and then come back to the board. So there's that item for a special meeting.
So, I mean, obviously, it's, it's the board's pleasure, whether it wants to set a special meeting or wait till, till the next scheduled meeting. But I am concerned that there are a few items like the goal setting that we keep putting over because we have some, because of just the press of the normal stuff that we have to handle.
Who is it that told us that we can't change investment advisors?
As I understand it, it would, that's a good question. And I have, one sec, let me just pull this up from Jim Ross from my office. Just pull this up. The, you know, Jim may be on, by the way. He, I just.
I, I am, John.
So rather than be struggling, why don't, why don't you?
No problem. As we discussed, I posed that question to U.S. Bank. They informed me that we would have to go with a self-directed approach to use the advisor that we were considering. And that information has also been confirmed through PARs.
And what was the rationale for that? Or do they legally have that right?
Well, I think it's their requirements under their agreements to have either somebody who is in a discretionary position and has the discretionary authority to make the investment decisions, even though there's direction by the board. The way, and, and U.S. Bank is the entity that originally recommended, B F S G is one of several people that we could talk to, is for their setup and the way that their operation is. And I posed the question twice to make sure that, you know, I, I had the firm answer. And they said in order to go with B F S G, it would have to be a self-directed plan.
Well, B F S G has lots of other people that they provide, other public entities and trust funds just like ours for other entities around the state that they provide the same advice for, that, the people that we currently have. So I don't understand their logic. I guess, I guess another way to say that is I'd like them to show us in their documents where we're required to do that. And if they can't do that, then I think we need to tell them what they can do with their idea. To be brutally blunt, because at the moment, I don't think they have the legal right to have us not do this. I'm going to propose that I don't believe we have, that, that, you know, until somebody shows it to me, I don't believe it.
Second, I think that the bottom line is we're still in the midst of sorting this out. I think that you, we probably need to arrange some conversations. You're sort of the, the, the at, the single person ad hoc on this issue. And I think that we probably should arrange some direct conversations.
But, yeah, they provide the same exact services for the same kinds of fees that our current company does. And so why in the world can U.S. Bank tell us that we can't use them when they, they themselves use them to do exactly the same thing for other trusts?
Well, I mean, to be clear, they're not saying we can't use them. They're, they're just saying that they consider that a self-directed trust.
Don't consider it self-directed for the other ones that they manage. Why should we be different?
Yeah, and I, I don't, I, I don't pretend to know. The other question is obviously, there's a broader question, which is, you know, this is a, a trust through PARs. They're not the only provider, obviously, of trusts. So there's a broader question here, which is, you know, is, if that's the arrangement with PARs, you know, and, and this is the only way it can work, are there other places that we could place the trust, you know, that, that don't have these kinds of restrictions or that allow us to use a different broker?
Given the returns that they've had recently, they're darn lucky we're not suing them, in my opinion. So for the last eight years, they've had abysmal returns. And if U.S. Bank thinks that, you know, we're just going to roll over and let them earn half of what the markets have been earning for the last eight years and, and they're going to force us to do that, I think we have a lot of really interesting questions to ask, including maybe talking to the Wall Street Journal about it.
So that's where we are. But my, my recommendation is, again, not entirely because of this item, but because we have a number of other items that it would make sense to have a, an additional meeting. But if we don't want to do that, then we could just put it over to the next meeting and then be talking in the interim.
I think we should definitely have a, it sounds like we need a separate special meeting. But we need to make, have some conversations with U.S. Bank before that, I think. Yes, for sure.
Then I'll work with the district clerk and we'll schedule a special meeting. We'll see what the board's availability is.
Any further discussion? Would you like me to open public comment?
Yes.
Public comment is open. We do not have any hands raised or in-person public comment. So now we're on to committee reports. Audit Committee?
John, do you want to?
This afternoon at three o'clock, we had an audit committee meeting and very successful reviewing the honors involved. Current, they've done some interim work and talked about the issues. And I think we're well on our way to another successful audit.
Yeah, it was a good meeting. It was a good meeting today and they're all over. They've had their interim meeting and they're coming back in August. And I think we will be on schedule to complete everything on time, in a timely manner.
Ad hoc committee for the joint fire prevention?
Someone, there's one scheduled for June.
Okay.
That, that's all there is.
Ad hoc committee for Station forty-five. Your, your, your microphone. And I didn't catch that. I'm sorry.
We got put on hold until the special meeting. Well, I guess we're, now that we have the data in, we're going to have another meeting and then it's going to also go to the special.
And one of the other items on that will be probably a slight reorganization of the ad hocs to be sure that we comply in the future with the Brown Act. I think we're fine now, but, but as we go forward, there's changes we want to make.
Okay. We can open public comment on the committee reports. We do not have any public comment. Requests for future agenda items?
We have Mark Evans in the Firewise Report.
Right.
A little bit closer.
Nothing else that I question.
Any others?
Oh, I have, I just, it, it actually, Gordon Nathan brought it up and I've been meaning to bring it up and he kind of reminded me, standards of coverage. Back when the former chief was here, we did get kind of a draft of where we were going with that. And it's been quite a while. So I'm not asking to have it done, but maybe you can just give us an update for the next meeting. Maybe even when you, you know, you chief updates or something, just on where we're at. That's all.
Yes, sir. Great idea. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Director Danziger?
No, I mean, yes.
Director Jex?
Yes.
Director Jorgens?
Yes.
Director Roma?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Time is ten thirty.